There we go. Thank you. Thanks, Floris. Try again here. Good evening. Thank you for the regular scheduled meeting of the Town Council, July 21st, 2014. Counselor Cockin, if you'd lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Floris.
Counselor Hemmam.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Cockin.
Here.
Counselor Manusas.
Here.
Counselor Martino.
Here.
Counselor Rell.
Here.
Counselor Roberts is unable to attend. Deputy Mayor Berry.
Here.
And Mayor Montanari.
Here.
Thank you.
There are no public hearings this evening. We'll move right into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak tonight in this case?
Linda Case, 103 Park Avenue. Okay. Picture of the time, since the afternoon. We're going on a short walk. We start out on Knott Street, heading east, near the corner of Wilkett Hill Road. There's a diamond yellow sign with a black arrow and a red octagon. Fine. A few feet later, seven feet in the air, there's like a chartreuse neon triangle with two stick figures with their hands and feet cut off, seven feet in the air, another sign. Then we come to the trusty stop sign. Across the street, there's a pocket park with an American flag implanted. Just shortly, a short time ago, installed there is a utility box that looks like an apartment freezer refrigerator. And it cries out, "Put graffiti on me. Put graffiti on me." Walking further across the street down toward Wright School, there's another, this wild admixture of signs again. There's like more triangles, more neon triangles, seven feet in the air, five feet in the air. One's coming, one's going. We move on to the Silas Dean Highway. Don't get me started on that. But that almost has its own charm already with all the, you know, utilities, the mast arms, the wires. But I'm concerned that a lot of the town is getting a very sleazy look. It's not a fault. It's just that so many agencies are doing things with no, and my mission tonight is to say, can we just look at it? We, I know you're dealing with $83 million things. These are much lesser items budget-wise, but it makes a look in the town. The most, and again, I don't know where to turn for this or what, I just would hope that you start looking as you walk or as you ride around, that New Jersey look, the inner-ring suburb look that's not Weathersfield. And I'm not saying let's make it all matched and overplanned, but I think, and I'm not against safe streets and crossing children, but have a look. I mean, sometimes it's so weird, you'll have one of the green neon ones with a mustard attachment. It's just a mess. If your living room was like this, you'd have like wires coming out of an old television next to a plastic sofa, next to a thermos bottle. I mean, it's a wild, it's the kind of things that in our consciousness, we must edit out because we have to live, we have to survive, we have to deal with big things. I'm just saying, take a look at this as a plus for Weathersfield to keep up a high quality of life, to attract good business, attract good residents. The final thing, like, I call it boxpox. And I realize it's not the town that does it, it's utilities or AT&amp;T. But if you go down to Spring Street, near Wells Road, across from apartments, there's like this mad cluster, at least they're clustered, but it's this biggest junkyard of utility boxes surrounded by dead arborvitae. And I should say that this is the second round of the dead arborvitae. They have some before they die, these new ones die. The final thing, and I'm always on this kick about street furniture, because it's such a part of sensibility. You're dealing with these huge expensive, and the high school and other things. So just, I ask again, to pay attention. And then the final thing, for only final thing, I keep saying final thing, another form of blight is from excess or inappropriate outdoor lighting. And again, I know we may be thinking about buying some of our own streetlights, and some are already bought in old Weathersfield, but if you look at the conventional ones on the street now, some are being replaced with metal halide, I call it infield prison lights, instead of the warmer sodium vapor, which are okay. Again, in the aggregate, please, what can we do or what could I do? I know I see Phil from the Village Improvement, Weathersfield Village Improvement, and I'm sort of been tasked with the idea of this topic. Do you have any ideas? Or I'm trying to, I don't know what to say on this. And I'm, I could do a photo journal. I just don't want to just spend money and printing and everything, but I could compile, like digitally and send you what, or do you know what I'm talking about, everybody? Like if you go to the New Dollar Store, which is fine parking lot, a whole crop is scrapped up there going up Jordan Lane. Some are seven feet, some are five feet. It's like, it's like dandelions. It really has that look of those dandelions with the, not dandelions, but when the seeds are, these round heads ready to sprout. So, that's my story. And I am always on the same topic all the time, with some things getting better, but I still think this needs to be watched.
I'm Carl Breran, 463 Wilkett Hill Road. I'm speaking for myself and my wife Irene. I'd like to address the Standish House issue. Standish House by its appearance and its location across from the town's first quotes Meeting House, First Church of Christ, and the Webb Dean Silas Houses is an iconic example of Weathersfield historic roots. The Standish family recognized this when they generously turned the Standish House over to the town, with the understanding that it would be maintained in its setting and appearance as a typical home in New England Village. And these terms were accepted by the town when it leased it to the Weathersfield Historical Society. It seems to me that a contract is a contract. Reducing the cost of maintaining the property by turning it over to some private party is not sufficient reason to break a contract, which should be illegal without the consent of the Standish family in the first place. I understand that two previous councils have discussed this idea and rejected it. How does a self-formed ad hoc committee with an agenda have the right to be supported by a council when this council as a whole has not yet even discussed the issue? I feel strongly that the town needs to keep its word. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bridges, and members of the Town Council, and my fellow townspeople. I'm Cindy Brown, and I live on Footpath Lane, off the Broad Street Green in old Weathersfield. I cherish our historic district. I really do. And while I hate to admit it, for 40 years, I have worked on Main Street in old Weathersfield. The first 23 years as a Realtor at Alderman Realty, and the next 17 years for the Weathersfield Historical Society as Director of Marketing and Events at the Keeney Memorial Cultural Center. I am utterly opposed to your recognition of this ad hoc committee. I've had a very lengthy talk with Mr. Manusas, and I think he's very, very well-meaning. But I also think he has no understanding of what our historic district means to our community. Come down there on any given day, there are cars parked along the Broad Street Green, along Main Street, with people walking, people biking. I know two women who come over from Glastonbury almost every good day to bike. Now, you may think I'm straying off the subject. I am not. This community, without our historic district, is like every other community. It sets us apart. And ladies and gentlemen, the Standish House, this beautiful 18th century house, sits there as a focal point of our whole historic district, flanked to the left by First Church of Christ, to the right by the beautiful Herbert Dunham House, a museum house, then next, our town museum, the Keeney Memorial Cultural Center, and then across the street from the Webb Dean Stevens House, the very idea of selling this beautiful property, selling it out to a private enterprise, I think would be a dreadful mistake. Yes, the first owner might come forth and say, they will keep it up beautifully, but who knows what the second owner might do. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we need to protect this beautiful property, and I hope that you ignore the request for the ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Hi. Jacqueline Smith, 524 Main Street, and it seems we're on the topic of the appearance of Weathersfield or the historic, oh, seems we're on the topic of the historical district. And I live across from the Cove. And to me, that has become a really blighted area. First of all, the white sign across the warehouse is really a blight. People come down and take pictures. Who wants to take a picture of a white sign? The whole warehouse foundation is falling apart. The parking lot is filled with potholes, there's garbage. I mean, I have pictures and, that I can give to you, that I took a couple days ago. There is debris throughout the area, between the water, the storm debris, when the water comes up high, there are piles of garbage, tree limbs, everything, on grass areas. One is right as you enter the Cove parking lot, there's a, a big pile of debris. It's not picked up. Last year, nothing was picked up. This, you know, we had the, over Memorial Day, the whatever, but there was garbage everywhere. Here you, reenactment, here you're inviting people into the area, but it looks terrible. And, I mean, there's talk of, or there is approval for a new dock system. If you went down and looked at the number of boats that go out, there's barely any anymore. There's a lot of open parking lots. There used to be regular people who would come down, park, have coffee, have whatever. That little island that's in the Cove, there's very few people. When I looked out at 10 o'clock this morning, there were no cars down there, nothing. Yesterday was a gorgeous day, there was a handful of boaters, probably the most, I mean, Riverfest, yes, the parking lot was filled later in the day, but that was a special occasion. And when you talk about the appearance, the day was before, the area was weed-whacked. But you had weeds this high. And, you know, when you looked around, there was all sorts of, you know, now you have this big pile of dead brush because weed-whacking was done. There's a lack of police, police presence in the area. People have talked about this for years. The police do not frequent it, they're not regular. We see little drug baggies come up into our properties, needles. Nobody lets their kids go down, their grandchildren, anyone go down to the Cove because you've got all this garbage that is left. In one corner that I photographed, far corner, there is this blanket that has been there who the hell knows how long. It's there. It isn't picked up. There's that porta potty next to the guard's house. There's garbage around it, there's garbage under the waste baskets that are left there. It's really disgusting. And you want people to come down and look at this area, and it is a major tourist area, but you've got, you know, the warehouse on the emblem behind you, picture it with the big white sign that says, "Come visit us." I think that, you know, you want to promote tourism, you want to promote this area, but there's got to be a better way than that of advertising the area, you know, putting a public sign, a tourist sign, next to where you have the historical on an outside area, you know, support the historical houses, give a little, you know, history, promote some of the local small businesses, all those things that could be done to help the area. But I think that you got to maintain the area to help it, you know? You want this area to look good. You know, some people don't care that nobody comes down with their boats because, yeah, you have less traffic, but you know what? That's what the Cove is. I mean, I've grown up in this area, people have come down there for years. Over the years, yeah, you can save the economy, the cost of gas, but people take their boats elsewhere. People still have boats. From what I've understood, we're paying the highest rates for boat launching, and people are going to Rocky Hill, East Hartford, other areas. You know, when you talk about traffic coming down to the Cove, you're talking about cars that are speeding, they're repeat offenders, they come down every day. You can almost time them coming down. They've got these big cars. Now, you've got people walking, biking, running, everything. And speaking of that, when you look at the Cove and you look at the warehouse, there is no walking path. There is brown grass that goes through, on the other side of the Cove, that section that goes behind motor vehicle, there is a nice paved path, nicely maintained, looks gorgeous. Right where everybody walks, you know, people kind of come down, the sidewalk, go across, go that, you know, by the warehouse, there is nothing. There's nothing that, you know, gets you up, there's a dirt path and boom. You know, there's, used to be a chain link fence, well, now half the chain is laying on, you know, one of the posts, rusted. It's not removed, it's not, anything's happening with it. Someone fell a couple years ago, yes, it was winter, yes, the area was icy, he broke his ankle. You know, how could that have been prevented if you actually had steps coming down or some sort of, just over the weekend, I saw someone struggling with a wheelchair, just trying to get it up that little incline. I think it should be, you know, make, made it better. You want people to see the warehouse, put a little walkway. And you're going to lose the warehouse if the erosion isn't dealt with. The pictures that I took shows the base of the warehouse has all eroded. The, I mean, having grown up, and then, I haven't been able to walk for a while, but then looking to take pictures, there is barely a path that goes from the Cove property down those hills. It's like, boom, the trees are all roots showing, that is all erosion. Something should be done to bank up that area and make it stable. You're going to lose, there's so much erosion going around the warehouse, it's the foundation. People will really think about that when you come into town, that, you know, you've got all this area. And, you know, aside from my neighbor who lives across the street planting all sorts of flowers, there's really nothing that's beautiful. But there's beautiful sunsets, there's fishing areas, there is, you know, a lot of things that it has to offer, a lot of family things that if it's maintained and brought up to, you know, a few more pic, you know, picnic tables, some bench seating, people can take pictures, you know? There's areas that could be made family-oriented, that would invite a nice quality, you know, of people into the area. It seems like that's lacking. I mean, if you've got drug baggies and needles and things, well, hell, you know, that tells you a lot about the people that come down and visit. There's areas going back by where the, the houses there for the boat guy, it's littered with cigarettes. Littered, littered. I mean, you couldn't take enough pictures to see that it's all debris down there. There is bottles of alcohol left behind, there's, you know, it's just, who wants their kid? I mean, I was down with my husband taking pictures, and I felt unsafe because the corner that we were in just didn't feel safe. I mean, I've been down there until nine o'clock at night. You don't see a cop car coming down, you don't see, yes, the park closes at, you know, dusk. Used to be that someone came down and, you know, kind of screwed it out. And where is the flag? The flag post that is there has no flag. I mean, is that an oversight? It's been there in the past. It's not. It's a naked pole. I mean, there's no flag for the town of Weathersfield, there's no flag for the United States. We, you know, pledge allegiance to it, but we don't have it, you know, in areas that it should be, the post, you know, the flag post. I think that the Town Council, maybe with the Historical Society, should be looking at this area. You know, the Weathersfield Beautification League, I was told, doesn't even want to come down and touch the area because it's horrendous. I mean, you want to live in an area and everyone, you know, they say, oh, you live down there, what a nice place to live. Well, yes, it's a nice place to live if the whole area is maintained. I mean, you have between traffic that's speeding down and you're risking, you know, and I know that some, this has been an ongoing thing. My kids grew up here, we've always, always, always have had complaints about the traffic. Nothing ever seems to correct it. And when you call the police, you're kind of labeled as a nuisance caller. So how often are you going to do that before you just, you know, they don't respond? You know, it's, there's a lot of subjects in that area that should be addressed.
Thank you.
I mean, to make it work for everybody.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I mean, I do have the photos and if you want them.
Please, you can pass them out. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening publicly?
Hello, Peter Gardo, 60 Griswold Road. The, the motion or the action for tonight would be to come up with a committee that would look at the, at the Standish House and how it's working. And I believe the committee, having a committee like this would be like chicken soup, you know, does no harm. And having concerned citizens being part of this committee to come up with better ways to run this so it's, so it's affordable for the town is something that is important. Everyone's taxes went up this year. We know how public buildings oftentimes are neglected. I'm very familiar with that, being on the High School Building Committee. Hi, guys. I would hate for the town to have to rebuild this building. Would be, in my opinion, if someone else bought it, like the Olson House was bought a number of years ago, it might be the best thing that ever happened. It's a great building, had lunch there on Saturday, saw the mayor, he was there too. But I think that coming up this committee is, is, would be a good step to move forward. So, thanks very much.
Thanks, Peter.
Good evening. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Guess what? The stop sign, right? Said it before, and I'm going to say it again. I know I have said this before, and I'm going to say it again. Why is it against the law to install a stop sign on Morrison Avenue in the eastern direction before approaching Tifton Road? As you know, Morrison Avenue and Hillcrest Avenue are two adjacent and parallel streets connecting Wilkett Hill Road with Silas Dean Highway. When Morrison Avenue was constructed, it was never meant to connect to Silas Dean Highway. But as a result of past town decisions, Morrison Avenue was extended to Silas Dean in 1955. Please explain to me why the town does not want to install a stop sign on Morrison Avenue. Hillcrest Avenue connects to Orchard and has two stop signs, and it doesn't need it, plenty of side distance. Morrison Avenue connects to Orchard and has one stop sign. Morrison Avenue also connects to Tifton Road with no stop signs and a substandard intersection side distance. Let me remind you again of the following facts, and these are facts, guys, coming from the town. The average daily traffic on Hillcrest Avenue is 365 cars. Morrison Avenue has 730 cars. The pavement width on Hillcrest Avenue is 30 feet wide. Morrison Avenue is 24. The snow shelf on Hillcrest Avenue is on the average of 15 feet. Morrison Avenue has an average of three feet, certain place two, and certain other place, no snow shelf at all. The most unsafe pedestrian location on Morrison Avenue is between Orchard and Tifton. Here, the sidewalk is adjacent to the road with a mountable curbing. Another fact right here, the distance from the curbing to the front of the houses on Hillcrest Avenue is 60 feet, and the distance on Morrison Avenue is 35 feet. Now, sound or noises travels, not in a straight shot. That means that the noise level in the houses on Morrison Avenue is twice as loud as a Hillcrest Avenue. And, and I invite all of you, or any of you, to come over my house for a cup of coffee and pizza, let's say, in the morning, and see what it takes to listen to the news. Hillcrest Avenue is a drainage system for the whole street. Morrison Avenue does not. Since the reconstruction of the sidewalk, Morrison Avenue has experienced washout east of Tifton Road. I live on the street since 1973 and never remember a washout before the reconstruction. There is something wrong, you're going to fix it, there is still rot there, and it's going to happen every year. Here we go. The intersection side distance for Orchard at Hillcrest is 344 feet to the east and 970 feet to the west with two stop signs. The intersection side distance for Tifton Road and Morrison Avenue is, guess what, 232 feet. These distances were measured by the town. The intersection side distance at Orchard and Morrison Avenue looking east is 290 feet, and the police department, now 290 feet, listen to that, the police department has stated that the stop sign is needed because you can only see 290 feet. Again, when you go from Tifton and you go and look in a western direction, you can only see 232 feet. And you're telling me at 232 feet, you don't need it, but at 290, you need it. The Connecticut DOT manual on the intersection side distance recommends that required distance for the posted speed, the posted speed of 25 miles per hour, is 280 feet. You can only see 232 feet in a downhill situation, which you would need more than 280. Now, the police department is determined along with town officials that nothing be done on Morrison Avenue. And I'm going to ask again, why? It's been four years I've been asking the question. It's been denied, but never really a good reason. Again, I would like to request a State Traffic Commission for a second opinion. What's wrong with that? Let's call the state, see what they say. I'm going to ask again, if any of you lived on Morrison Avenue, would I get the stop sign? And if a policeman did not live on Hillcrest Avenue, would they still have two stop signs? Remember, the stop sign on Hillcrest Avenue, as stated by the town manager, are not needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gus. You'll have to charge for the cookies though, Gus, because it'll be a bribe otherwise. Anyone else wishing to speak? Public comment? Bob? Bob?
Good evening. Robert Young, twenty Copper Mill Road. As we all know, tax, the tax bills are out and they're due very shortly. And I just continue to think it's a waste of money, Mayor, paying taxes in this town. We've continued to see deterioration. We continue to see taxi increases and services are, for someone like myself, are practically zero, with the exception of the roads. I, I, I just find it extremely expensive to live here like a lot of other people. And I don't like it. The next issue, I know tonight there's something on the, on discussion for the urge, I'd like to urge you to form a formal committee to look at the Standish House. I think there are some issues there that need to be looked at. As you know, I'm asking questions myself through FOI on this and I, I really think we need to have some real answers. Now, there were some people that got up tonight and spoke about the Standish House and how in support of not doing anything about it. But what they must please realize is that the Standish House is costing the town citizens of Weathersfield a tremendous amount of money. Sit there and shake your head, no. When we pay, when we only pay, get, a hundred dollars a year on a lease, and the lease was made for what, fifty years? When we start thinking about the money that we are losing by renting that building out or putting that to a better use? When we start thinking about anything over three thousand dollars that the Weathersfield Historic Society spends in expenditures on three or four properties, I think it's four properties, anything over three thousand dollars, the town picks up the rest of it. Why should we be picking that up? We should give it back to the Standish family. If we're such poor stewards of this property, and the town is a poor steward of property, we've seen this over the years. Look at any of our buildings. Look at the high school. Look at everywhere. And now you own that property for many years, of course, but you're still poor stewards. You give it to some group who's going to make forty thousand dollars a year on the rest of the taxpayers in town. Is that fair? I say, give it back to the Standish family. And if the Standish family takes it, let them do whatever in the world they want with it. They could give it to the historic society. But then, the historic society would be responsible for taking care of their own lawns, taking care of their own shoveling of the snow, taking care of any kind of problems beyond three thousand dollars. They're responsible for it and it's out of our hands. Give it back to them. I think that's the best and the fairest way to handle it because you're poor stewards. Renting it out for a hundred dollars a year. I think that, you know, right now you're in negotiations for labor contracts, if I read correctly in the newspaper. Do I have any confidence that you people are going to get a good deal for the taxpayers? Heck, no. After reading that lease for a hundred dollars and all the goodies that they get, I have no confidence in you people. The ones that wrote that agreement, that lease, weren't working for the town of Weathersfield. They were working for the other side. And Mayor, I think you were spearheading that at the time. Pitiful lease. And now here we are. We have this little problem and they kept it so quiet over the years. Tried to get information from the mayor, from the manager. He does share some of it. He doesn't answer all the questions, and I hope he does. But I really think we need to have a group that's going to step up and put this information out to the public and figure out, make some suggestions, what needs to be done. My suggestion is, give it back to the Standish family. You're not taking care of it. Next. I noticed that in the town of Weathersfield, Hartford Current has advertised that we had seven more liens coming up. This was a couple months, this was a month ago. Then I noticed even more liens coming up on homeowners. I mean, people have to pay their taxes. I understand that because I have to pay mine too. But the fact is, you're throwing people out of the, out of their houses in order to get your tax money and you're not making any effort to hold taxes down. And this continues on year after year. As we go into next year, we're going to see bumps going up because of our normal inflation that you people will kick in and the high, and the school system will kick in. We're going to see the, all that lending that's going on, or borrowing, I should say, for the high school. We're going to see that pumping up, pumping up, and for the next four, five, six years, we're going to see some big jumps until it starts smoothing it off. But you can't live within your own means either. And you are poor stewards of property. You wait, oh, we just got a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to do something with the foodways. Oh, you just got ten million dollars from the state of Connecticut for your high school that you mysteriously were under ten million dollars on your appraisal of what it was going to cost to do it. Seventy-five million, now you're up to eighty-five million. But you mysteriously got ten more million dollars. Also, you got two million dollars from the sale of the CLMP building because the investors didn't want two million dollars. They just left it on the table so the town of Weathersfield could come by and pick it up and scoop it up. No, the, the state of Connecticut paid over two million dollars more than what they should have for that building and it's just another add-on to our debt here in the state of Connecticut. As I just said, we got ten million, we got the two million, you get the four hundred and fifty million. East Hamden had them down there by the, by the Opera House, they get a half a million. Waterbury gets who knows how many millions and it just continues on. And Dolores and I aren't going to be able to pay it. We're gone. We're old people. Your kids, if they stay here, might not even pay it off, Mayor. I know my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Others wishing to speak this evening? Public comment? Buzz?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say, I thought he said Buzz.
I did. Candace, you'll be, you'll be next. You've been up twice, sort of.
Buzz Willard, one forty-one Main Street, Weathersfield. I'd like to speak about the proposal about the Demming Standish House. As a past president and fifty-plus-year member of the Weathersfield Historical Society, I want to make it clear that I'm speaking only for myself. I'm no longer on the governing board, nor do I have any vote beyond any of the other dues paying members. The historical society has purposely never been involved in politics. The membership and the governing board have always been chosen from people interested in the history and the well-being of the town of Weathersfield. One of our purposes is to promote restoration and preservation of the historic structures in our town. The Standish family donated the structure to the town because they trusted Weathersfield residents to, quote, "to preserve the rare setting and appearance of a most typical New England village." More recently, the town made the historical society stewards of the Demming Standish House and what is now the Keeney Cultural Center to foster economic development and tourism and to have the buildings restored at no cost to the town, which they did. Since I've been old enough to vote, I've been a Republican. I'm sure that Councilman Staphus Menusos and I would agree on many political points of view, but putting an important historic structure like the Demming Standish House up for grabs to the highest bidder would be a terrible disservice to the town and the historic district. The Historic District Commission only has control over the exterior of a structure as can be seen from the public way. The interior would be at the mercy of a non-caring owner. The house has seven walls of beautiful raised paneling created by master builder Captain James Francis of the Weathers, of Weathersfield and praised by restoration architect J. Frederick Kelly in one of his books, Early Domestic Architecture of Connecticut. He was the most important preservation architect in Connecticut during the entire twentieth century. Selling this structure would be disloyal to the Standish family and the agreement made with the historical society by the town of Weathersfield. The historical society uses the rent from the Standish House to help pay the expenses on the Keeney Cultural Center. Because I was formerly active in Republican politics, many people have been coming up to me and complaining about this Republican proposal. It's time to let it die. Thank you very much.
I think Candace, no, Candace is waiting. Thank you.
I am Candace Holmes. I live at four oh eight Hartford Avenue. I'm the president of the governing board of the Weathersfield Historical Society. I want to run over some of the facts that maybe are misunderstood or unknown about our relationship with the town. The Demming Standish House was given to the town of Weathersfield by the heirs of Cynthia Standish, as you've heard twice now, to preserve the house and to preserve the rare setting and appearance of a most typical New England village. To make the gift transfer legally binding, the town paid the consideration of one dollar. The town rented the Demming Standish House on January twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty-nine to the Weathersfield Bank and Trust Company for a yearly rent of six hundred dollars. The building later became a branch of the Hartford, Connecticut Trust Company. In the nineteen forties, the Demming Standish House became the Town Hall Annex, when the Town Hall was in the old academy at one fifty Main Street. And town offices, including the police station, were housed there in the nineteen fifties. After the construction of the new town office building and library on the Silas Dean Highway in nineteen sixty, the Demming Standish House became the headquarters of the Weathersfield Board of Ed, which vacated it in November nineteen eighty-two. By then, the building had become rundown and somewhat altered and the center staircase and one of the chimneys had been removed. Seven walls of paneling created in eighteen hundred by Captain James Francis, Weathersfield master builder, remain in the Demming Standish House and have been described as particularly fine by J. Frederick Kelly in his Early Domestic Architecture of Connecticut. The original building contract between James Francis and Henry Demming survives in the Francis's family papers at the Connecticut Historical Society, making this a very rare documented interior. In nineteen eighty-three, the town of Weathersfield put out RFPs for the reuse of the Demming Standish House and the Governor Thomas Wells School, which had both become vacant when the Board of Education moved out. As part of the town's economic development plan, a destination restaurant was sought for the Demming Standish House. The Weathersfield Historical Society saw the opportunity to preserve and reuse both buildings, to create a restaurant and a museum in the center of the historic district, to foster economic development and tourism, to have the buildings restored at no cost to the town, and to have the Demming Standish House returned to the tax rolls. Five proposals were made to the town for the reuse of the Demming Standish House. The society's preservation proposal was to restore the building and lease it to a restaurateur, but to continue to monitor and ensure its preservation. And there were four proposals from restaurants. The restaurants' proposals included ones with extensive changes to the inside of the building, removal of the original panel walls, large additions and expanded parking. The town council considered all five proposals and chose the society's preservation proposal in order to fulfill the town's obligation to preserve the Demming Standish House. As an integral part of the proposal, the council approved the society's development to restore the Wells School and to develop it as a museum and cultural center with the arrangement that the restaurant's rent be used by the society to support the town's museum and cultural center in what became the Keeney Center. The linked proposals were approved in the original rental agreement and reaffirmed in the two thousand eight lease. The historical society selected a restaurateur who was required to restore the building at its expense to the society's standards. The house had been altered and maintenance deferred. Under the society's supervision, the building was restored. Among other things, the central staircase was replaced, missing chimney rebuilt and patched asphalt roof replaced with wood. Professional kitchens and other modifications were made to accommodate a restaurant operation, but within the original footprint of the building. Costs for this restoration were in excess of one million, bond was one point five million, and were paid by the restaurateur, not the town. The building was returned to the tax rolls, income from personal property tax for the restaurant business. The historical society raised one point four million privately for the restoration of the Governor Tom, Thomas Wells School Building and its transformation into the Keeney Memorial Cultural Center. The project was overseen by Weathersfield Historical Society volunteers Ann Cookrow and Dorcas McHugh. Since nineteen ninety-seven, the historical society has invested over four hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars in capital improvements on the Keeney Center. The town has not paid for major maintenance and capital improvements, although it is obligated to do so after the first five thousand by the lease. The items the town would have otherwise been obligated to pay on this town-owned building include three hundred and twenty thousand for a new roof. An interest-free loan from the town was paid back over ten years, ninety-seven to two thousand seven, via grants from the Robert Allen Keeney Memorial Fund at the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. Thirty-five thousand, two hundred thirty dollars for fire doors on the second floor. Sixteen thousand, new HVAC units. Seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-four, new HVAC units. Forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven, new HVAC units. Two thousand six elevator improvements, eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four for new awning and carpet in the rear entry. The Fountain of Service and Memorial Garden that beautify the Keeney Memorial and our Village Center were funded and continue to be maintained by the historical society through private donations from Friends of the Fountain. The historical society spends approximately two hundred and sixty-six thousand annually to operate the Keeney Center. This includes three thousand paid to the town toward utilities. Rent from the Demming Standish is forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two annually. The historical society is proud to be partners in preservation with the town of Weathersfield to help it fulfill its historic preservation obligations and to help maintain the high quality of life in our community. The town and the historical society made a sound decision for the town for economic development, historic preservation and tourism. The town got the benefit of preserving the Demming Standish House and developing it into a restaurant with no cost to it, to the town, and the benefit of having the historical society at its expense create a museum and cultural center at the Keeney Center. The town was relieved of the expenses of operating two surplus town buildings and as owner benefits from their increased appreciation and value. I would like to present to you another partnership between a private entity and a municipal government. In nineteen oh one, a private foundation built and established a property and then entered into an agreement with the municipality in which it was located, whereby that city would fund the maintenance and operations because the entity perpetuated cultural benefit for the public good. Thus, from its earliest days, a tradition of partnership with city government, private philanthropy and outreach to the community was established and continues to this day as an independently managed nonprofit corporation, operating with both private and public funding. The municipality is New York City. The property is the New York Public Library. Although our situation is of a smaller scale, it holds the same basic premises. It is about vision, foresight, preservation and honoring one's commitments. Thank you.
Doreen?
Doreen Ciarcia, thirty-six Spring Street, current Weathersfield Historical Society governing board member. And as past president, the person whose name is actually on the Standish House lease, representing Weathersfield Historical Society. And I can tell you that throughout two thousand seven and into two thousand eight, there was a great deal of there was a great deal of due diligence done with respect to that lease, whether it was with the town council at the time, the infrastructure committee, the town manager, town attorneys, and of course, from the society's standpoint, a committee and attorneys as well. But there was a great deal of due diligence done throughout that process. And in fact, some of it discussed at town council meetings and on the public record as well. So it was done in an open fashion in accordance with town procedures and policies. And at that time, as I said, extensive review done. So when I look at the wording for the ad hoc committee and it talks about the purpose of reviewing the lease between the town, the Historical Society, and any sublease-in effect to make a report, that was all done in 2007 and 2008. So I do find it a little redundant that we would, six years later, be looking at that again. Also, as has been mentioned, but I would like to also agree, in particular as a resident, we have a signed agreement. And again, it went through process. And some people on this council voted for that lease and accepted that lease. It's signed, it's done. And we can like it, we cannot like it, but it is signed and it's done. And if we make a precedent of reopening leases that are signed and done, we're going to have issues down the line with potentially other town agreements and contracts because this would set a precedent for doing so. And I don't think that's a good thing. So respectfully, I don't think this ad hoc committee is a good idea. Thank you.
Mr. Standish.
Councilpeople, town manager, thank you for hearing us out. I think all of us have something to say about this proposed subcommittee. Before you tonight is a proposal to officially sanction a self-appointed, in my opinion biased, committee created to end-run the majority decisions of two separate councils because certain disgruntled council members refused to accept the majority decisions by those majorities. One decision was a binding legal document, unanimously agreed upon by a previous council in the form of a long-term lease with the Historical Society. Whatever is forthcoming from this unofficial ad hoc group, the lease supersedes any such recommendation. Another decision by council majority was to reject a previous unprecedented effort to kill the grant proposal for upkeep to the Standish House property in order to pursue a sale. To my knowledge, this was the first time in council history where there was an attempt by council members to thwart a grant that the town sought. Finally, the council majority has previously declined to extend recognition to this self-appointed committee. In spite of the council's choice to stand by its previous decisions, this purportedly representative committee, chaired by the chief cheerleader on council for the sale of the property, is populated by certain others who have stated an a priori position that a sale is the option to pursue. What's more, the rest of the committee's composition was not selected through an unbiased council-appointed process. Rather, this chairman handpicked its members. And finally, key stakeholders, including the president of the Historical Society, another resident of Old Weathersfield associated with a key historical association in town, and I, all declined to participate in what we perceive to be a process with a foregone conclusion. As you may know, my grandfather Jared Butler Standish undertook great effort to bring the Standish heirs into consensus over entrusting the family's property to the town so that it would be cared for in perpetuity. His specific language was that the property was offered to the town by the Standish heirs to preserve the rare setting and appearance of a most typical New England village. Many things have changed since those days, but I sincerely hope that the character of this town's leadership is such that it too can be trusted. It remains to be seen. My grandfather gave very generously to the town he loved, given his role as a Weathersfield historian, his historical research and writings, his pro bono design of the town seal under which you sit tonight, his seminal role in formation of the Historical Society, the Village Improvement Association, and his chairmanship of the town's tercentennial committee. The Standish heirs' intent for historical preservation was quite clear. When cavalier council members treat such largesse and original intent with this level of disregard, it sends a deep chill to anyone contemplating future gifts to the town. This architectural treasure was given and rightly belongs to Weathersfield citizens and to posterity. If it falls into private hands, the town loses control of an irreplaceable historical asset to the foibles of a private party's business plan. It harms the Historical Society's ability to continue its contributions to the town's well-being, and it violates a trust that I and many others will not soon forget. If we look at the Masonic Building in the center of town and remember how long that was a derelict property privately owned, then perhaps we can understand what a travesty it would be to see the Standish House in the same condition when a bad business decision forced a bankruptcy. Stand by your well-considered majority-derived and binding decisions. Do not lend credence to this transparent effort to end-run past deliberations, nor cave to inappropriate pressure. Public comments have overwhelmingly supported your past decisions and the status quo. Stay the course. Thank you.
Dorcas McHugh, 508 Island Street, Weathersfield, Connecticut. Hi, everybody. I think I know most of you. We've discussed so many elements of this problem that has arisen with council. But we have to go back to the 1980s when the town had the problem of closing about eight schools. And we had empty school buildings in town. And the town council and the town officials worked so hard to make good use of these schools, mostly for public purpose, which they did. They established the Greenfield School as a community center, and they knew exactly what it costs not only to establish it as a community center, but to run it, which is a very expensive proposition, but very effective for this town. Then, most of the schools were handled and put up for public purpose. But we had the Wells School. And the town just didn't have anything. They just didn't know what to do with it. They couldn't have another community center, they couldn't afford it. They went to the Historical Society, which was a very small society at the time, and they said, "Can you take this over?" And the society sort of gasped. And it really divided the membership. And they said, at that point, "No, we can't." And luckily, Mrs. Keeney, shortly after that, came up with a donation to the Historical Society to help with the renovation of the Wells School in honor of her son, who was killed right at the end of the war, three days before the war ended. And we were very foolish at the time. And we were so excited and thought we could open that building one room at a time with this donation. Well, we found out that we were foolish because we needed an elevator, we had to make all the codes. Well, it took us 10 years. And we raised privately, without much, with cooperation from the town but without town money, we raised $1,400,000. And we opened up the Keeney Building. And it has been fabulous for this town. But we only could have done it with the leadership of the town managers. We worked hand in hand with them all the way. They helped us. We'd take a step, they'd help us push us up the next step. We'd take another step, they'd help us again. And we've just had fabulous cooperation with this town. And I think the Historical Society has done a fabulous job with this building. And the only, one of the agreements at that time was how was the Historical Society going to maintain this building in its day-to-day operations? And that's when the Demming Standish House came into play. And the rent for the Demming Standish House was to help the Historical Society with their daily expenses. And in addition, the town plugged right in. They helped us with the electrical for five years. And it was a wonderful cooperation between the town and the Historical Society. And I think it has become very, very successful and very successful for the town as a whole. And now we get back to, why are we trying to break this lease and this cooperation that we've had? Because the Historical Society, and the budget is public, and I know that you have copies of their budget. It's not a rich society. They work very, very hard just to meet their budget in the course of a year. And they are always working on fundraising, so they do a great job. To get back to that, but get back to our heritage. Weathersfield is the oldest town in Connecticut. It was established in 1634, and that's all documented. The people in this town have worked so hard for generations to preserve this heritage. They established, we have the largest historic district in Connecticut. And we've just, the townspeople, we're a small town, but we're a hard-working town. And we've had so much cooperation that we've been successful in Old Weathersfield. And I only plead with you, please do not sell Weathersfield historic heritage. It isn't for sale.
John.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council and community. John Consell, 38 Ivy Lane. I'm not going to be redundant tonight because a lot of the things I was going to talk about was also mentioned. I'll just read one part of my comments and I'll hand it over to Dolores for the record. "The proposal to sell a donated historic property that is in the heart of the historic district is the same as selling a piece of town history that will never come back once gone." Remember that and think about that this evening when you're deliberating over this item during the evening. I'll turn this in to Dolores so she has it for the record. Thank you, Dolores.
Thank you.
I think in my opinion, from sitting here tonight, and I've had numerous articles here, what the council, this council should be focused on is the following. And the first is a major one, is every person in this audience that lives in town received one of these documents? Every council member did. I sat with some economic people that I know that I've worked with for many years in the financial industry. And using a complex monetary multiplier that they've used over it and to come up with some facts, and like I said, this is what the council should really be focused on. In two years' time, every person in this room will be paying an additional 10% tax. So whatever your tax bill is right now, add 10% to it. And that's basically, that's about a baseline right there. And there's no doubt about it, that's what's going to happen. And talking about this one property that is costing the town some money is like stepping over dollars to pick up pennies. So really get to the facts. This is where the council should be focused, right here. Because in two years, you're going to be driving a lot of the people, taxpayers, out of this town if taxes continue the way they are. We should be focused on that. You should be focused on the Weathersfield High School to ensure that the building comes out properly. There are people from the high school that come here every couple of weeks, and I watch them on TV. If it wasn't for the gift that we received from the state of Connecticut, the $10 million, our 10% increase would be more like a 12% increase. We should be focused on the commercial properties in this town. I understand there's 23 commercial properties that are in the process of bringing legal action against the town for the increase in taxes. We should be looking at that. If any of these commercial properties were to fold up and leave, or any businesses fold up and decide to leave, we'd be in a world of hurt. That's where we should be focused. We should be focused on the blight that's on the Silvestine Highway. I'm sorry, the Berlin Turnpike. And there's one in particular in my neighborhood, right now on the corner of Knott Street and the Berlin Turnpike. And the previous council, or two councils prior, tried to do something about this. But if you go by there now, there's the Christmas tree shop that's totally closed up. And now the gas station or repair shop that was on the corner is gone, and this left a disaster there. So if you want to talk about Hartford Creek slowly coming into this town, that's what you have to look at. And by having buildings like this, like the Historical Society, what they do, I think, is an important role for this town, you know, far longer than I've lived here. And I've lived here since 1962. But without organizations such as this and without some backing from the town to keep the heritage the way it is, we'll become the South End of Hartford. I don't want to see that happen. Thank you.
Good evening. John Poirierello, 49 Dudley Road and also 322 Silvestine. I'd like to urge the town council not to pursue the sale of the Standish House for several reasons. Number one, there's a binding lease with the Historical Society. And I think that we should look back at our recent history with legal bills that, we don't need any more unnecessary legal bills, no offense to my friends in the legal profession. But, you know, the Historical Society would have a fiduciary duty to sue the town, which would be absurd. Candace brought incredible facts tonight that really show that the Historical Society is a wonderful steward of the Standish House. And I agree with one of the prior speakers that the town is a pretty horrible steward of the high school, but that doesn't pertain to the Standish House. The other chilling effect that the sale would have would be on any future donations to the town, which, you know, might as well just say, you know, "We're not interested in honoring our word anymore for any future donors." And if the town wanted to save money, here's a really minor way to save money, is every year, every winter, I see the town trucks plowing the snow in front of Bliss Market in Leo's. And I scratch my head saying, "The town's not plowing my snow in front of my business, nor should they." So I don't know if you're even aware of that, but it doesn't make any sense why the town is doing snow removal for a private business. That's all. Thank you. Oh, one positive note, because I know you very rarely hear positive news. Lieutenant Mitney has been doing a fabulous job in helping my neighborhood resolve a problem, so kudos to him. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Kopp, 100 Executive Square. I was one of those people that was asked by Mr. Manuzos to be on the committee, and I accepted. But after listening to what I've heard tonight, what he asked me to be on and to consider and to look into is not what I've heard. And somebody has to stand up for you because... In full disclosure, my ancestors are from Boston. And they're, you may have heard of Kopp's Hail next to the Old North Church. Some of them, I understand, even did some work with Mr. Dean. They didn't trust him, but they did some work with him. And so, my ancestors would have preferred to have Old Weathersfield completely aflame then. But this is now. I don't think that I was asked to do anything about selling the Standish House. There were some questions that came up. Why I became interested was that I had never heard of this lease. And for 50 years, it was even more of a surprise. Now, there is legal opinion that the lease is null and void. There's legal opinion on the other side and in the middle. What I think should, look, this committee is going to go forward. If the committee doesn't go forward, I'm going to keep looking into it because it's become very, very interesting. I've learned more about the Historical Society and the town by doing this than probably I could in any other way. But this committee's going to go on. By having the town council endorse it, all it does is... By having the town council endorse it, all it does is give the committee some resources. The town manager has paperwork that should be looked at, and we've been getting it from him, you know, bit at a time. I don't know what, I have no preconceived opinion of what should happen. I mean, I really don't. And that's what I don't understand, Lee. I don't have any predetermined opinion.
You were speaking to me, you weren't the party that I cited.
Okay, well, then I apologize.
Advocating your sale. Let's not make this personal, please.
Okay, well, no, but I thought you were, so... As I said, this is going to be looked into. If the, if there's a recording of what is going on during the committee meetings, it's helpful to all of you, to the town. Look, what could happen? It could stay as it is. It could be deeded to the Historical Society. Selling it would be, presents a whole lot of problems, so not certain how that would work out. But everything should be looked at, and I think it's in the interest of the Historical Society, of the town, and all its citizens. So I, I think it should be endorsed, and I, I think there should be a time limit put on it so that this doesn't continue into millennium, but the, it, it should be looked at. Thank you all.
Anyone else wishing to speak? No other further public comment, Steve? Thank you. We'll move on to council reports. Council reports. Tony?
There's been an EDIC meeting and a couple of subcommittee meetings. The finance subcommittee is working on finalizing the revisions to the facade loan program to standardize things, and it should be finished next month for presentation to manager and on to the council. The marketing subcommittee has started working on next year's town calendar, moving ahead with the business directory website, working on a fall breakfast, business breakfast meeting, and the December salute to business dinner. And at the breakfast meeting, they're looking to bring speakers in to give help and advice to our businesses in town.
Thanks, Tony. Mike?
I just had a question, I guess, about, I, I'm on the finance committee. I didn't know there was finance subcommittee going on.
No, the EDIC has their own subcommittee, finance, to go over their budget and overseeing the facade loan program.
Okay.
They have two subcommittees, one for finance and one for marketing.
The, the high school building committee, I attended the meeting last Monday. Things are in full swing right now, and there are folks here from, from the committee, from ONG, and I see Mr. Emmett as well. I'm sure they're prepared to speak in, in more detail if folks have questions, but project is proceeding on schedule. The Phase Two contracts, some of which will be asked to deal with this evening, everything is, has come in within budget, but I think, again, there'll be more comment later.
Thanks, Steve. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Two items, one, and they're somewhat related. One is the Weathersfield OPEB Trust met back in June, and just to remind folks, this was created a few year, a couple of years ago, basically to help the, the town fund its future retiree healthcare obligations. And on actuarial, actuarial basis, those approximate somewhere around $70 million or so, just based on the promises that have been made through labor contracts over the years with the town employees. The, the bad news is that as of a few years ago, we had nothing in the trust. The good news is that we, the council, past couple of councils have started to fund it, and the market value of the securities in the trust were about $7.5 million as of May 31st, and the return on the trust, which is invested in a combination of fixed income and equity securities, was about 10% since the inception, so it, it grew nicely. And based on the fact that we've had a couple of good years in terms of healthcare within town employees, we're going to be able to put additional money into the trust, maybe approximating a couple, a couple million dollars, I believe, Jeff, over the next several months.
Somewhere between one to two.
Okay, all right. So it's a big obligation. The good news is that unlike some towns in the state, we're actually starting to set aside some, some significant dollars to address them. And connected to that, the, the insurance committee met the same night, and as of the end of, with one month left to go in the fiscal year, so as of, also as of the end of May, we had a, a surplus in the last fiscal year's healthcare account of just over $1 million. And that has to do with a number of things, but including the fact that the, just the healthcare-related claims paid by the town has not only stopped growing, they've actually gone down somewhat over the last couple of years, so that's, that's good news. And there are a couple of other things just on the insurance. Subsequent to us setting the budget, I believe we were able to negotiate a slightly favorable rate from KIRMA, Jeff saving us about $11,000 on our lap policy, our liability.
Yes, their estimate of 5% actually came in at three.
Okay, so a little, a little break on the current year's budget that we've started on. And the other, which wasn't so good, is with the last couple of years, we've been able to get an equity distribution from KIRMA, but because their reinsurance costs are going up, it doesn't look like we're going to be getting any supplemental revenue from KIRMA in the form of an equity distribution. The good news is we didn't budget for it anyway. So that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Nice job on that report. Mike?
Thank you. I just wanted to let the public know that next week, the 29th, which is Tuesday, at the Keeney Cultural Center, I believe at 6:30, there will be a presentation and a workshop for the, the Heritage Walk, which has shown some progress along Old Weathersfield to, to tourists with various stops and kiosks. So the public is invited to go, see what is being offered by the volunteers who dedicated their time to, to this task.
Thank you, Mike. Any other council reports? Council comments? Jeff, Tony?
Two comments, Mayor. First one is, I received a blight request last week, and I turned it over to the mayor, I mean, the manager, and the new person we have on board for zoning enforcement and blight, Monica did a super job. She responded to it, and it was taken care of quickly, so kudos to our new hire for taking care of that problem right away. Within a couple of days, everything was taken care of, and the grass was taken care of, and now they're working on the gutter, so things are working out for that. And the other thing I just want to say is, kudos to the Board of Ed for graduation last month. I mean, we hear how, you know, the scores aren't doing well, we're not getting our return on our money, but it came up that day that this class that just graduated had the most honor students, honor society members, won the most awards, the JESP program won the national championship two years in a row, more kids going to colleges, so we had super class and really talented kids. Matter of fact, they saluted Torian, instead of giving a speech, sang and did a super job, so my comments to the Board of Education and a fine class that just graduated from our system.
Thank you, Tony. Further comments? Jeff, last topic?
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. I, I appreciate seeing everybody here tonight, especially members of the Historical Society. I've been waiting for an opportunity to, to really explain what this committee and, and what we're trying to do. So I haven't had the opportunity, or wasn't given it, to get in front of the Board or the Historical Society to explain it, because a lot of what I heard tonight, and I think Paul Kopp echoed it, was everything revolved around the preconceived notion that all that we wanted to do, me personally or this handpicked committee, was to sell the Deming Standish House. And that's, that's not it at all. That may have been what grabs people's attention, or might have been the misinformation that's been circulated among the group, but that's not it at all. All we're really asking is, and let me preface this by saying, I was born and raised in Weathersfield. I have a full appreciation for the history of the town, for what the Historical Society does. Many people that I know, respect on, that are supporters and board members, so that has nothing to do with what we're trying to do. John, you know, Poriello had said that we have a fiduciary responsibility to preserve the town, and yes, indeed, we do, but we also have a fiduciary responsibility for the entire town, which includes the preservation of it. And so what we're really talking about is not selling it to a private owner, it's trying to find alternatives to the current situation that would do three things. That would preserve the funding for the Historical Society, that would preserve the structure, and that would reduce the net expense to the town. So that's something, as far as I, you know, I'm not sure why, if there's a better way of oper, of operating and managing, that's a win-win for all parties. I guess the question is, why would we, we be afraid to look at that? You know, some people have, have had some other ideas about quality of life and some other things they'd like to see, you know, around town. Well, couldn't a win-win situation here, if there is one, that is acceptable, help fund or source some of these, these other issues? It's, isn't it our responsibility to really find better ways to operate? You know, we do this in our homes, we do this in our businesses. Why shouldn't we do this here? That's, that's our obligation to the taxpayers of the town. And if every concern of the Historical Society is met, so why shouldn't there be this discussion? Again, there's no, there's no harm in it. I think it was Peter that said this is like chicken soup. I guess there's no harm in chicken soup. But just because there's a 50-year lease, you know, and a deal's a deal, to me, that's just not good justification, not if our, if our interest collectively is truly in the So again, all we're really asking is, what's the harm in looking at alternatives that can meet all these objectives? These aren't, weren't handpicked members of the committee to the extent that I want people on this that had only one opinion. That's why I invited Candace and Lee as my first two calls. You know, and I still disappointed that they didn't want to serve on it, and it'd certainly be great if they still wanted to. There's a, if, if people have read the motion or the, the request tonight, they would see that the goal is not to sell the building, it's to find alternatives that meet those three objectives of the committee. And those weren't dreamed up by me, those were, those came from residents in town. And, and I'm, you know, I'm happy people came out here. There was also, you know, an online poll that somebody did that showed that almost 65% of people that responded either wanted the ad hoc committee to look at this or to sell the building. Again, I'm not saying we sell the building, but I think that's compelling enough to say that we should at least support this, this group of very good people. I mean, and I can read the members again. Paul Kopp, unaffiliated. Robert Gary, a Republican. Me, I'm a Republican. Claire Mead, unaffiliated. John Mullen, a Democrat, who's also on the Capital Improvement Committee, and Jennifer Wolf, unaffiliated. These are all respected individuals in our community, so it's not a cavalier group, and it's certainly not handpicked for one particular purpose other than to do what everybody thinks is right for the town. And again, what's right for the town will be, will be right for the Historical Society. So if we're to listen to the public, then, then there's no reason why we shouldn't support this committee. And not just members here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and if I can want, add one thing, too. And, and the reason why this was brought up today in this formal way is because last time, we did it kind of on the fly, and certain council members suggested that it should be brought in front of the committee, or in front of the council, in this manner, and that's what we did. So like Paul said, regardless of the outcome here, the, the committee, there's, will still continue to, to look at this, look into this, come up with alternatives that, that may or may not work. And, and we hope there's more dialogue, and we'd certainly, again, enjoy the Historical Society being a part of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Scotty. Any other council comments? Jeff, town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some idea of what's on the podium for you all this evening. There's a motion relative to the lease at Executive Square for the tower location that Attorney Boria will go over with you. Also, there's a full set of the high school renovation materials that took over 200 pages in the packet, so we printed out the most important pages for you to look at. And just so you know, the agenda form, that form that we usually put individual motions on, that one form has three motions. There's three separate pieces to the actions on the historical, or excuse me, the high school project tonight. The first one is purchase of furniture, fixtures, equipment for Phase One and Two. Second is toward the bid package, bid packages that were delayed in anticipation of the additional funding. And three, there's three value engineering deductions on some of the, on the, on three particular contracts that we'll ask you to take tonight. And throughout the, throughout that item, they'll have, we'll have people explaining each one. So just so you know, there's three motions on that one agenda form.
Thank you, Jeff. I mean, I appreciate the additional documentation, because it's a, we have a large agenda of stuff for the high school, so that work is very helpful.
Thank you. It got messed up.
No, it's all good now.
Dolores, anything?
Yes, we have a Republican primary coming up August 12th. All the polling places will be open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It is, absentee ballots are available tomorrow from my office. The offices are going to be voting on a governor, lieutenant governor, and comptroller. Also, next Monday, we are going to have the contract that you all approved for our office and land record system. It will be installed next Monday, probably starting at noon, and we will, while we will take documents in, we will not be able to enter them into the system until the, the switch has been totally made, but that should be that day.
Thank you, Dolores. Okay, moving on to council action, ordinance, resolutions, appointments. We have several appointments that are on the docket. We'll start with the appointments since they're the longest list. Deputy Mayor?
Bear with me, there's, there's a lot. Motion to appoint to the Board of Assessment Appeals, this is a reappointment of Brent Owen as an alternate, 42 Wells Farm Drive, term 7/21/14 to 6/30/2020. To the Board of Building Appeals, Scott Courtmanche, reappointment, 200 Rutledge Road, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2019. To the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, John Mullen, this is a reappointment of 158 Windmill Hill, from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. To the Central Connecticut Health District, Angela Colantonio, reappointment from 16 Morrison Avenue, from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. To the Connecticut River Assembly, Joseph Smith, 83 Apple Hill Road, it's a reappointment, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. As constables, Albert Von Figlio, 33 Old Post Road, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. John O'Leary, P.O. Box 290002, reappointment, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. John O'Leary, P.O., Box 290002, reappointment, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. Brian Zito, 55 Charter Road, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. And Robert Turgeon, 962 Cloverdale Circle, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. To the Design Review Advisory Committee, Bruce Boxdale, 255 Crest Street, reappointment, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. To the Weathersfield Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities, Kathleen Cagna, 27 Meadowview Drive, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. Jocelyn Valenti, 55 Old Common, reappointment, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. Lee Sekus, 117 Wells Road, Unit 13, an appointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. And Christine Taylor, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. To the Fair Rent Commission, Jeanette Soroco, 37 Fairview Drive, Unit B, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. Cynthia Zerbalas, 119 Two-Rod Highway, reappointment, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. Sue Grady, 25 West Look Road, reappointment, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. To the Fence Viewers, Harry Lichtenbaum, 16 Townhouse Lane, reappointment, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. To the Historic District, Chris Lyons, 21 Woodland Street, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2019. John Aforismo, 185 Broad Street, as an alternate, from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. To Human Rights and Relations Committee, Sandy Schultz, 64 Springdale Road, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. And Mary Ann Wardak, 51 Ridgecrest Circle, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. To the Insurance Committee, Frank Cena, 103 Eastern Drive, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2019. To the Library Board of Directors, Doreen Siarcia, 36 Spring Street, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. Hannah Granfield, 79 Bucklin Road, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2015. And Nicole Ferrari, 25 Belmont Street, from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. To the Parks and Recreation, Peter Silbo, 72 Dix Road, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. Bill Derrick, 132 Randy Lane, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. To the Personnel, Personnel Appeals Board, J. Edward Brimmer, 64 Old Post Road, a reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. Maria Alfonso, 256 Brimfield Road, from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. To the Planning and Zoning Commission, Thomas Harley, 289 Cedar Street, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. Anthony Homicki, 201 Cumberland Avenue, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. Thomas Dean, 33 McMullin Avenue, from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. Ryan Allard, as an alternate, 75 Summer Street, from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. And Bezia De La Ripa, alternate, 37 Robinswood Drive, 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. To the Redevelopment Agency, Paul Thompson, 148 Clearfield Road, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2019. To the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, Barbara Higney, reappointment, 126 Valley View Drive, from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. To the Shade Tree Commission, Philip Cashman, 96 Oxy Oak Drive, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. To the Solomon Wells House, Anne Doyle, 269 Wocket Hill Road, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. Teresa Rose Urbansky, 46 Marmar Court, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. Sue Buckland, 766 Wocket Hill Road, from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2016. To the Tourism Commission, Dorcas McHugh, 508 Highland Street, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. To the Tourism District Central Regional, Katie Sullivan, 79 Wright Road, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2017. To the Greater Hartford Transit District, Brendan Flynn, 109 Springdale Road, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2018. And finally, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Tom Vaughn, 484 Copper Mill Road, reappointment from 7/21/2014 to 6/30/2019.
Second.
You repeat that?
No.
I missed about that.
It's too bad we don't have any volunteers.
Can anybody not get appointed?
I was going to say. Any comments? We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Donna?
I don't have as many. For, and I'm going to start with, appointment dates all begin today, and I'll read the, actually, there's three that are through 2017, and three that are 2016, so I'll read the end dates. The Board of Ethics, Chris Healy, is a reappointment, 27 Dorchester Road, till 6/30/2017. Flood and Erosion, John Maycock, is a reappointment, 13 Megget Park, through 2006/30/2017. The Library Board, Terry Santapalo, 131 Carriage Hill, through 6/30/2017. And as constables, George W. Cody, 131 Charter Road, through 2006/30/2016. Stephen McFarland, 80 Farmingdale Road, through 6/30/2016. And Fred Rackel, 14 Pebble Road, through 6/30/2016.
Have a second?
Second.
Any conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Council Action B-1C, request for appointment of an ad hoc committee. Councilman Menus.
I lost my page. You figure this would be the one I'd have firmly, right? What page was it on?
It's under B-13. Go back to the key.
Seven? Seven or eight?
Okay, there we go. I was on the wrong agenda. All right, so the motion would be to appoint an ad hoc committee with the membership as requested for the purpose of reviewing the lease between the town, the Weathersfield Historic, Historical Society, and any sublease in effect, and to make a report to the Town Council within the six months of the date of appointment. Said committee will terminate upon the presentation of their report to council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
If anybody needs any clarifying information, I guess I can try to provide that.
I'll, I'll speak on this. I think I've said it before, and, and I'm going to say it again. My view is that this discussion started with, with conversation about the sale of the Standish House. That's what got the whole ball rolling. The focus now is on a lease, six years, six years old, a decision made by a council six years ago. I got involved in politics because frankly, I wanted to do something and wanted to do something and be a person of my word. I think a contract is, is an agreement, and I think it is not a good use of the town resources to focus on ways to get out of a contract. I do think it's a very bad precedent to look back in this fashion. I think it sends a bad precedent, both to folks who, who would want to give gifts, as it's been said, to the town, and also folks who want to do business with the town. If eight years from now, some other council, no one who's sitting at this table, can say, "Listen, I don't really like what we agreed to. Let's figure out a way to get out of it." I don't think that's a good use of town resources, and, and for those reasons, I do not support, support the ad hoc committee continuing on. I also think the conversation has not respected the role of the Historical Society, both to the culture and the fabric of this community. So for all those reasons, and, and other folks have said it more eloquently, but I do not support continuing on with the ad hoc committee.
Echoing a couple of deputy mayor's comments, sometime back in the 1920s, the governing body, which I don't think was a council then, and maybe it was a Board of Selectmen, accepted a gift on behalf of the town, and I do not think that we should go down a path where we sort of unaccept that gift, unless the heirs wanted it back, and it is apparent that they don't. Number two is, we do have 44 years left on this lease with the Historical Society. If the Historical Society and the town together wished to change the terms of the lease, yeah, I think we could, we should get together and talk about it. It's apparent from the discussion tonight that the, that the other side of this lease does not want to, want to go down that path. The, I'm very leery about forming ad hoc committees for very specific purposes. You know, I was comparing it to, you know, what if I, what if any one of the other councils, what if Tony goes to me and says, "We really have to have an ad hoc committee on the repaving of, of Two-Rod Highway," or, or on putting more placades in, in various locations in town and so forth. I mean, that's, that's really the responsibility of the council and the council committees to go down that path if there's an issue. So I don't like the, even the concept of the ad hoc committee, regardless of which party brought it up here. And finally, this does, in, as part of the motion, it does say they're looking for some service from the town manager for this. You know, we've had a lot of discussion tonight about the, the difficulties the town is facing in terms of limited economic growth and, and increasing levels of costs related to our services. Town manager has a lot on his plate in terms of trying to guide us to both improve our services and yet reduce costs, preserving public safety. This is just not something that I would want him to have to focus on over the coming six months or so. So for those reasons, I will be voting against this motion.
I do support the motion, and it's not necessarily to only look at the lease, but when I look at the objective of preserving the structure, that is a big expense that I think needs further discussion. We have talked very significantly about capital improvements and the competition that we have between all of the different pieces of such, and this is yet another one, in trying to get a better handle on what those are, because there's many things in relation to the infrastructure within the community that need our attention, and they compete for funding sources. So I think that, I see that as part of the discussion in looking at alternatives.
Thank you, Donna. Mike?
Thank you. To Jeff's point about possibly creating various ad hoc committees, just because one or two council members would like to see, you know, to address a certain issue in town, much like you had mentioned about repaving of Two-Rod Highway. If the town had repaved Two-Rod five years ago, and it needed to be repaved again, I would want to know why the town had to repave it a second time. Much like the Standish House, the work that has gone on over the years by the town has to be duplicated yet again. For example, I believe we're going to be looking at the painting costs of the Standish House. The town just paid to have it painted five years ago, or less than five years ago, yet we're going to be doing it again. I would like to see through this committee some of the costs incurred by taxpayers here in town. Not only, you know, what you see on the physical building, but the landscaping, the plowing, the utility costs, snow removal, somebody had mentioned. These are all costs borne by the taxpayers of the town. While I appreciate Mrs. Holmes in the fact sheet that she had given, this is the exact reason why we need a committee. I didn't know a lot of this stuff, and I'm very appreciative that she had provided it to us. But an ad hoc committee having public hearings right here in this room, to have the public input, sit here and, and testify about some of these things on both sides, you know, those for or against additional insight into the Standish House, you know, I think that gives us reason enough to have a committee so that we could hear from the public input. While we're hearing a lot tonight, going towards, hearing this testimony towards a committee to report back to us gives us not only, you know, the side, on one side, but gives us a chance to listen to the other side. For that reason, I do support the creation of an ad hoc committee.
Thank you, council. Any other comments? Seeing now we have a motion and a second before us for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Do you need a count, Dolores, or?
Yes, just a second.
Yes.
Counselor Hurley?
Yes.
Counselor Kotkin?
No.
Counselor Menusas?
No, just joking. Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Martino?
No.
Counselor Ral?
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Barry?
No.
And Mayor Montanari?
No.
Four yes and four no. Does not pass.
Thank you. To council action. We have no unfinished business, so we're going to move on to 3A, the Weathersfield High School renovation project. We have several significant pieces of this approval process this evening. I'm glad to see we have several members of both the Building Committee and the Board of Education and the Chair here to guide us through it. So I suspect we have a bit of detail to go through. Appreciate your indulgence, and I'm going to turn it over, I assume, to Christine and Dolores.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, council. Christine Fortinato, Chair of the High School Renovation Committee.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to introduce a motion to, to start the process, if you would.
Absolutely.
Motion to authorize the purchase of Phase One and Phase Two furniture, fixtures, and equipment as recommended and requested by the Building Committee.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, Christine, you have Now, Christine, you have the mic, sorry.
Thank you very much. We're here this evening to provide you with some information about furniture fixture and equipment purchases for Phases One and Two that were approved by the Building Committee at our meeting last Monday. Phase One of the project, of course, is the renovations that are taking place, the additions. So, this would be equipment for the new music wing, excuse me, athletic wing, and so forth. Phase Two is administration. Actually, Phase One is also our new media center, correct? Yes. And Phase Two is also administration. That includes, of course, guidance and nursing, support services, it's also academics as well. We have with us this evening Mr. Bushy from the Board of Education, who has done a yeoman's job at putting together the FFNE plan, working with members of the Building Committee at Breimer, the Vice Chair of the Committee's been part of that ad hoc committee, as well as the Superintendent, and of course, working with the architect to put this together. Do you wanna come up, Fred? And of course, we have our Superintendent as well, Mr. Emmett is here, who can answer any questions that you might have on this motion.
Good afternoon, everybody, or good evening, I should say. I hesitate to read through all of this, 'cause it is a very huge, large package. I will give you some numbers that I hope will suffice for you. If not, please feel free to ask any questions about anything that we have on before you tonight. We have two separate packages in Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One package is approximately $396,466,000, and as for all the furniture that has to go within the media center, the coral and band room, and part of the gymnasium. There are some other areas down there, trainer's room, things of that nature, that are also part of this. Phase Two package is worth approximately $355,123. This includes science rooms, includes the admin area, includes the guidance area, all casework, all different furnitures involved, and to that nature. Mr. Bridges?
Just a question for clarification. We're going, looking at the spreadsheet you provided?
Correct.
Phase One, 416?
The 416 that you see there encompasses not only FFNE, but technology also.
Okay, they've got three separate numbers. They've got a 416, a 351, a 35.
Okay, I'm using the numbers of FFNE budget, which has to do with furniture, and furniture alone.
Okay, if this one's, and this one are just furniture, then we have the two technology bids that are separate.
That's correct.
Okay, but the Phase One FFNE is 416, 289. Phase one, your spreadsheet.
Are you sure he's not adding those other three, the laptops and server ports?
All I can do is go out to the council and ask for any questions about anything that's going to be purchased. I can elaborate on the State of Connecticut contracts that we've tried to piggyback off of. Both contracts that you see, that you see that have State of Connecticut documents to them are for both classroom furniture and any miscellaneous wood items for administration that can be purchased, that has been vetted through State of Connecticut DAS.
Just for clarification, so we can make sure we're all looking at the same numbers. Four separate items, four separate actions, 416, 289?
Yes.
351, 879?
Yes.
35, 730?
Yes.
That's for the switchgear?
Yes.
And then 195?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Raffinow is also here for anything about technology that we can add.
The laptops are the 35.
All right, so we agree on the numbers?
Yes.
Those weren't what he said.
This is the revised page, right?
Yeah, I apologize, I did not have the revised.
Stay with us, Fred.
The numbers are the numbers.
It's one motion, though, for those four line items.
999,000, 291, 46.
Yes.
That's the same amount that the Building Committee approved.
Do we have questions on council about those four items before we move further?
I just have some questions about the furniture, just to make sure. I went through all the documents in the packet, and with the pictures and the amounts, and it was overwhelming. But, the question that I wanna ask is related to, I see that it's many different areas. Are there classroom areas or other areas where existing furniture will be used, or is that all the furniture will be new?
Most of the furniture in these two packages, Phase One, Phase Two, is all brand new. We are, some of the ADA items that I have purchased throughout the years here for the, for the admin and the guidance area, we will retain those. There are certain items, other items within the guidance that were specialized items that they had asked for, that we will retain, that I've just gotten here in the past few years. Music, band and coral, anything like that, is all specialized, and that is all new equipment.
Well, I understand there's a new area, but in looking at the other, looking at the classroom areas, will equipment that exists today be used with, when the renovation is completed? You know, what, I guess what, the question would be, what proportion of the equipment will be new? Understanding the new areas, so there, the changes in what's being used. You know, the media center stuff, the music stuff, of course, because it's a whole new area, and retrofitting isn't gonna work with the existing equipment. But, you're looking, I saw teachers' desks, I saw different chairs, different desks for students. What is the percentage of what will be new versus what will be existing or exist today and is in good condition?
I'm gonna take a stab at this, and please don't hold me to a quantified number. I'm gonna say about 30% will be able to be retained. The rest of it has gone well above its useful life. As we've moved a lot of pieces of furniture, they fell apart. Desks that were taken, desks, not the big desks, but the big tables that we took out of the science area, as soon as they were unbolted from the floor and we were able to put some bodies on it, that tried to move them, they collapsed. Things like that had to go. I've tried to, I'm gonna try to retain single desks, chairs, especially chairs, that are still in good shape for classroom areas. We do have that, and this is all in, will be in Phase Three, Four, and Five, as far as purchase. As far as this purchase here goes, that we're speaking about this evening, this is almost, I wanna, let's say about a 90% turnover of new versus old. There are some things that I was able to save.
Okay, and this is all, and then just related to the budget numbers, this is coming in on target, it's not, the bids are not over budget from what was in the original budget?
We are on target, yes.
Okay.
And in terms of the replacement, I would just ask you to envision the life of the building and the life of the furniture, the equipment that is in there, and that, you know, we're updating to have a modern facility.
I understand that, and I just couldn't glean from the detail about whether, in fact, it did just that, because we've been there before. And, you know, suddenly furniture comes up, and oops, there's no money left. And I remember this for the police station, where we were gonna ask for donations for furniture. So, I mean, it's fresh in my mind, and, you know, not being able to tell because of the detail, it just was like, uh-oh.
That's good questions, too. Fred, are the, is the vast majority of what's going out going to be disposed, or is there any salvage value?
We've been able to salvage some things, shelving, things of that nature, obviously take it, you know, took it apart. We have it in the trailers, stored in the trailers. A lot of, especially the wooden things, just fell apart, and they ended up going by the wayside. We offered it out to all the schools, whoever wanted to come over and take a peck at. And just add another caveat there, we had, our dumpsters were located in the backyard, and they got well picked over by many folks, just looking for just odd items that may be okay for certain use, but, you know, we really can't use them. I've offered some things out to the town. I know, working with physical services, some chairs, some tables, and I believe we were able to create a conference room for cats upstairs of our building, with some of the donated stuff that we've had. And I try to keep as much as I possibly can, and the problem is, I'm running out of space to keep things right now. It's gonna be a massive effort here in the next month or so to move forward.
Thank you.
And I would also just point out that the laptops, the 90 laptops, are for the media center, so we'll have new state-of-the-art equipment in the media center that I know a number of you have the opportunity to participate in the tour.
Thank you. Other questions about this particular motion, this first group of four?
Mike? Actually, just following up Christine on the laptops, do we lease those, or are they purchased?
Hi, this is gonna be a purchase. The 90 for the media center is a purchase, so we'll own them, and we hope to get 15 years out of them.
15?
Our current computers in our school district are 10 years old, and where they're still trucking, so stuff is built better today, so we'll see how we do.
Are they upgradable, I would assume?
They are.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead, Jeff.
A few questions. Can you just sort of take me through when this furniture arrives, and where it goes, and when it'll start being used by students? I'm seeing what rooms are gonna be outfitted, and I'm just trying to figure out where you are with the project, and then when the furniture would be actually used by the students. Is it this coming year?
Okay, hopefully by December 1 to 15, let's take a, you know, a variable there. We should start to come online with the media center, the abandoned coral rooms, the gymnasium area, excuse me. That'll all be newly outfitted for the kids to use, okay, that, those areas. Just a little while after that, the admin area will come on, along with the guidance area, so we'll have all new things in there. Again, that will not encompass children, obviously, but the administration of our building. Then, you know, getting into Phase Three and Four, Five, that's when I think it'll affect the children the most, because this is where we'll be into the classrooms, and heavily into the classrooms, where the areas that are, the north wing, the north wing, part of the west wing, part of the east wing, again, all classroom areas will be gutted, and we'll be putting new things in there.
The, a lot of this is for science classrooms, it looks like?
That's correct.
And so, where, I know the science classrooms are horribly outdated.
Science classrooms are scheduled to be.
Above the admin? Yeah, they're above the admin, and there's also a food lab.
Yes.
Culinary's coming online, as well as, I think it's chemistry.
That's correct.
Chemistry labs in some English classrooms. So, if you picture the school, it's where the admin is and the classrooms that are above it, and as you turn the corner, what used to be the lecture hall is gonna be all infilled, it's gonna be turned into the new culinary, and then above that is, there's two floor levels of classrooms, so that's all gonna be turned over.
And is that in the first couple of?
That's Phase Two, yeah.
So, by Christmas or so?
Correct.
That this, all this furniture should pretty much, that we're approving tonight, should pretty much be in?
Yes, yes.
Right, we need the approval to be able to get the order in.
Okay, and maybe you could just talk a little bit, I know everything's off the state bid list, but I assume other furniture is also available off the state bid list, so I was wondering if you could just talk about why you pick, why you're picking what you're picking for the school?
Durability, length of service that this, that Verco offers, their furniture stands up to the test of time, stands up to our children, and what they do, what they might not do with, you know, with the furniture. I've been very successful in keeping this brand up and not having problems with it. When I have had problems with it, I've had factory representative, excuse me, factory representatives there to help us out firsthand, and if we need, if there was something there that was, that went awry, we've always gotten new to capitalize on. And they worked exclusive, Verco Corporation worked exclusively with Cuisinberry, Arcary, our architects, as far as putting this package together. I was a big part of this. Our Friday morning meetings, which were very lengthy, throughout probably at least six months of time through this, went through everybody, vetted this, through all the folks that were going to use it, okay, to make sure that everybody had a stake in this.
Okay, and one last question, when I was going through it, it looked like there were twice as many chairs as student desks. Are the student desks have two students apiece, is that how most, many of them work?
Some of the, some of the desks are tables, where you put multiple children at one table, John.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
I have a question. On the, I just heard talk about the laptops, I've never heard a laptop lasting 15 years. Could you kind of go through that? Where would you get an estimate like that?
We have 1,200 computers in our school district right now that are all 10 years old, and we're gonna be in year 11 this year, so we make them work. We add RAM when we need to, and most of our, most of our applications now are online, cloud-based, so we don't need as much power at the, in the computer, so to speak. We don't need larger hard drives, because everything we're accessing is via the cloud. So, these are laptops that'll be able to access the internet for many years.
How many laptops do we have now?
Right now, we have approximately 200 laptops.
And we're saying these will all last 15 years?
The current ones that we have now, we're gonna try, because times are tough, we keep using the equipment. So, like the 1,200 computers I just referenced, district-wide, we're on year 11, we have no plan to get rid of them. We're gonna try to replace them as we need to, but right now, they're working.
Just have one picky question about security of the laptops. And I know for myself, having a work, a laptop as a work computer, I have a computer lock that I can key around, you know, a table leg, so that nobody can walk off with it. Will these laptops be secured in the media center? It's very easy, I understand the benefit of portability and moving from place to place, but at the end of the day, you know, if somebody doesn't put it backwards supposed to be, and it walks out the door, and people don't realize it, they're just easy to take away in.
Yeah, we're gonna, they're gonna be on carts, just as we've had laptop cart, iPad carts in each of the schools. So, after the students use them, they put them back in the cart. At night, they're locked up. We've had iPads for almost four years now, we haven't had any stolen.
Okay. Okay.
Or lost. So, the staff does a nice job keeping them secure on those carts. And they charge also overnight, so these laptops, the battery will last all day. Batteries are better today, too, than they've ever been.
Just a concern.
Yes.
Gets drilled into my head.
Committee members asked the same question.
Other questions? Okay, we have that first motion and a second in front of us after discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you on that. We're going to move to the bid award packages for the increased funding.
Motion to award the following contracts and contract amounts. Roofing to Silcon Roofing for two million fifty-four thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Flooring to Urban Contractors for one million four hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Ceramic tile to Daleen Hardwood Flooring for nine hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Food service equipment to Todd Devine Food Equipment, Inc. for seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Painting to Mackenzie Service Corp. for six hundred and two thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Council, before you, are five contracts were put on hold in anticipation of the additional funding. Laurel Purcell has put together these contracts for review. There's actually a full, if you go to your big pages here, there's this complete summary of all the contracts on the first page and then the next, the following pages are bid summary for phase one and then a bid summary for phase two. So, by approving these contracts tonight, all the contracts will have been awarded and then you'll move into value engineering deductions, which are the next set of motions. So, Laurel and Christine, can I turn any questions?
My first question is, I know these were in the group that we anticipated would hold and that, is that, that's the case. They have held.
Yes.
The contractors are still confirmed and alive and well.
Yes.
And we are not seeing any impact as a result of the hold with respect to the pricing and also the schedule?
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
The, on the flooring one, there was alternative eight, ten, A and ten B that we're not doing?
Correct. That was to, it was an increase to do polished concrete and what you'll see on that large spreadsheet are just the alternates that were accepted. So, those particular flooring alternates were not accepted.
So, what, what happens to that flooring now?
It's going to be VCT instead of polished stained sealed concrete.
What does that mean?
VCT is what's your typical vinyl composition tile. It's what you see twelve by twelves when you usually walk down a hallway.
Okay.
The, the other process was more expensive. It's bare concrete and they grind it with like a diamond grinder and they stain it and they polish it. So, it wasn't upcharge.
Does that, well, that makes me ask the question, would, is that a lot longer life, though, if you did that versus the VCT? VCT is what, about fifteen years?
Yeah, about, well, depending on how well you take care of it, could be twenty years. And the stained sealed concrete, it's probably, I don't know how often you'd have to stain the color again. It's requires less maintenance as far as like the buffing operation.
Fred, do you want to come up too?
And these are, these are in what areas, Laurel?
I think one was a cafeteria and I don't.
Cafeteria's a lot.
There was some science.
Science labs.
Yeah.
Most of these, Mr. Mayor, are, the, VCT is an alternative. If, if, again, if I had my druthers polished concrete for, or a, at least a polished concrete floor, then not so much as being stained would be the optimum way to go because of maintenance. Very, much, much less maintenance as far as, and every day upkeep. VCT must be stripped and waxed on a regular basis. Normal, normal wear and tear of that. The floor can last a number of years, but during, during the summer. Again, depends upon where the actual flooring is, on how it's stripped or how it's actually polished, if you would, or.
Closer to the mic, Fred.
Polish concrete is a better product. Absolutely no question about it. The maintenance of, of VCT, it requires two or three men, many hours to do it, depending on, on the square footage. That means we have to buy stripper, that means we have to buy wax, that means we have to buy certain pads to upkeep the floor and to keep it sparkling and shining like you all know I like to do.
I will say that we have tried to meet Mr. Bushy where we can and where, as a matter of cost, we had to compromise. This is an area where the committee decided to go for this alternate item that we have been assured by our staff, oops, sorry, sorry. The consultants on the project that this will serve us well.
But we'll have to replace it in fifteen years?
I think we can get a little bit more life out of that. It, it, as long as we take care of it in the, in the proper fashion, which I have, I have very good staff as far as that goes, it can, it can last.
Yeah, yeah. The other product was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred and, for those, all section?
Hundred and fifty-two. Right.
So, all three alternates would have to be added to cover the three areas we're talking about.
That's correct.
Yeah, hundred and fifty-two thousand.
I'm sure the building committee looked at this question, we're just looking at it.
Yes.
For redundancy purposes only, I'm sure. Other questions on this?
Was it, I'm sorry, was it a unanimous decision on the building committee?
Yes, the, the building committee had to vote on all of the VE items.
No opposition, at least ultimately when the vote came down?
On this specific item, I, I can't recall, but it was voted by the entire voting membership of the committee.
Okay.
Obviously, there was a majority to pass it.
Other questions on these items? Okay, we have that motion and a second in front of us. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And then finally, the approval of the value engineering deductions.
Motion to accept the value engineering changes ordered deductions from the following contracts. Connecticut Mason Contractors for a hundred and forty thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. GDS Contracting Group for a hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And GNR Valley for two hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I know I talked a little bit with Jeff about this today because I was a little confused until he clarified it, but these, as I understand it, are original value engineering initiatives that were taken and now because we're at the point of approving these budgets, we have to also line item these deductions. These are actually reductions that were looked at earlier, but now we're approving the deduction relative to the budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I'll let you clarify, or Jeff, if you were.
I think you said it exactly right. We approved the full value of the contract and now we're deducting those items that we've agreed to as value engineering deductions.
And, and for the benefit of, since the numbers, I think, total somewhere around about five fifty, just, just give us a flavor of the three items, what the deductions essentially materially amount to, I guess, going through first the masonry, then obviously the drywall and the plumbing. I do remember some discussion on this, but just to share it with us.
Okay. The Mason, the Mason credit is consists of three changes. One change was just the fact that we got such a late start with our masonry that we actually realized a cost savings by not having to construct the gym walls in the middle of winter. So, we were able to realize a seventy thousand dollar savings just for the temporary heat. They would've had to put temporary enclosures up and provide temporary heat to construct those walls. Another item, it was to delete the cleaning of the exterior, existing exterior brick facade. So, this eliminated power washing the rest of the building and that we had talked about when you build it, when you're trying to build an addition, you take the bricks and you try to match the building as it is. A lot of times when you, when you build your new addition, then you power wash the building afterwards, all of a sudden, it doesn't match again. So, it's not necessarily a, a good thing to power wash the building. So, that was in the job and we deleted that. And the last.
So, when you took us off for that tour and you showed us how perfectly they matched, you matched them to the dirty brick?
Correct.
Great. Nice work there.
And then the last item that, for the Mason, is just a very high, highly technical item and it was to reduce some of the rebar and grout and non-bearing interior block partitions. This was something that was discussed with the structural engineer. We got direction from the structural engineer, just another way to reinforce the new partitions that we're constructing in the building. So, that was a savings of thirty-one thousand. So, those were the three changes for the Mason. For the drywall, that also consisted of three changes. The biggest was we were able to reduce the pitch of the roof and I know we had talked about it before. Instead of the half-inch pitch, we're doing a quarter-inch pitch, which the state has now, you know, they've reduced that as well. They're no longer requiring the half-inch anyhow. So, we realized an eighty-eight thousand dollar savings just by not having to build what we call parapet walls along the whole perimeter of the building to, to make the insulation that much thicker. So, by not having to build that, we realized savings there. And there's two more changes with the drywall. We were building the temporary partitions, once we, right now, we're going to be building temporary partitions in the existing gym and originally, when they were doing their takeoff, they were building the partitions all the way up to this, the roof deck. We said, no, we don't have to go that high. Bring the ceiling down to nine feet, we'll put acoustical ceilings up. So, that was a savings of a fifty thousand dollars. And then there was a drywall ceiling that's in a mechanical room under the auto shop. The, there's an acoustical engineer that's been involved in your project and the acoustical engineer had wanted to see a drywall ceiling to, to prevent noise from the, what's going to be the new boiler room under the auto shop from projecting up into the auto shop, but it's been agreed that we don't need to worry about that type of noise. So, we deleted that drywall ceiling and that was a savings of twenty-five thousand. The plumbing, there were a little more changes involved with the plumbing. Sixty thousand dollars as was for not having to do the half-inch pitch on the roof. We were able to get some savings on roof drains. That was sixty thousand. What else was on here? Ooh, there's so many. Revised water piping from a copper to PEX on pipes one inch and smaller. Delete insulation on vertical storm piping. We, we had a requirement to do some coordination using a modeling program. We were able to look at that and reduce that cost. We delete, we revised above-ground waste and vent piping from cast iron to PVC, which is kind of standard now, as well as storm piping from cast iron to PVC. And of course, it's a heavy-duty PVC. So, that was the majority of the plumbing changes. And then another, one more change was to revise the plumbing fixture type, the way that it was flushing, the valve device. So, and, and the owner was involved with, you know, the administration, everybody was involved with these changes. So, it's not reducing at all the quality of what we're building, just material changes.
Thank you, Laurel. Appreciate that. That's a nice summary of the changes. I don't think there are too many questions about that, I imagine.
Just a, just a further comment. You'll see an additional one point five million dollars worth of VE changes coming before the council over the next few months.
Those will reflect just the normal course of stuff?
The other fifteen or so trade packages all have VE items that you'll, you'll see.
Very good.
I've got a question on that, Jeff. So, we have another one and a half million in value engineering changes. I thought when we got this additional state money, that brought us back to completely paying for everything that was originally budgeted for.
No, it was, it got us to where we would pay for everything after value engineering. We went through a process to determine things where we could change materials and change some things without sacrificing quality, but save significant dollars, and then approached the state for the remainder of the funding.
So, those, so those two value engineering items together are about two million?
Correct.
So, so in other words, we weren't ten million over budget, we were like twelve million over budget.
No, it should've been eight. Well, we ended up at eight, so.
We had nine, eleven.
I think we were potentially ten before the value engineering.
But again, the, the value engineering is part of the process the committee goes through. So, until the committee completed that process, the budget figure really was not set at that point, so.
But to stop this point, I.
No, I thought we approved an eighty, a seventy-four million dollar project. Right? The voters approved a seventy-four million dollar project.
Right, but.
Right, and how much did we get from the state?
What I'm saying is then, as you look at the products, the materials that you're putting into the building, that's a process that we went through. There was determination made about where we could have different products that still, it saved money and got us what we needed. So, that was the process that the committee was going through with the value engineering. We would've been doing that regardless. That's part of the review.
I understand that. I understand. I guess this is just a simple math question. We had seventy-four million approved by voters. We got ten million from the state. So, what's that? Eighty-four million, right?
That's the, yeah.
Right, eighty-four million.
Right.
So, that's what the ONG sheet here, whatever page this is, shows, but that includes, that's after the value engineering changes. So, the ten million wasn't enough. We, we needed another two million to really get back to where we were originally, so, or.
No, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with that. There are items that were presented that the committee considered. If we had taken all of those items, then yes. But the committee went through, reviewed what was necessary, what still met the goals of the project and still saved money.
Right. But I think to stop this point, I think that he's, he's, I, I recall the same way, too, is I think we were at one point before, we did the value engineering before we went to the state for the space waiver. And my recollection was that potentially, we were eleven point three, eleven point four over the original bonding authorization from the town. So, I, I know we did the value engineering exercise and I think accomplished that number of around two million, give or take.
Right.
Prior to us being certain that we were going to approach the state on both the space waiver and the additional assistance, as well as we looked at our capital budget for possible resources as well. So, I, I think Southie's correct in remembering that potentially, we were at that number, but we actually never hit it in light of the fact that the value engineer. We knew, I think, very early on, back if I recall, in September or October, that we were potentially at that eleven-five number.
Right.
In terms of exposure. And it ended up sounding like being just under ten. I think there was a couple hundred thousand dollars at the end of the day between the value engineering and what we got committed through from the space waiver that closed the gap, but I, I think he's correct in remembering that we had to do both.
Right. And also, don't forget, don't lose sight of the fact that you've awarded nine hundred and sixty thousand in add alternates.
Yes.
So, I mean, the original budget was not even considering these alternates.
Correct.
So, you had a savings of two million, but you spent an extra nine sixty at the same time.
Right, right. And at the end of the day, I think the formula, the formula that was used in the space waiver calculation took into account that you had already done the value engineering.
Correct.
So, the total number submitted for consideration for the footprint had the, the full number. So, the, both formulas obviously had to work together simultaneously.
Right.
In terms of what DeFranzo did.
Correct.
For the space, so.
Correct.
But I think, I think that's correct.
Yes.
I want to say that, you know, both, all three of the documents sections that you provided tonight, obviously, a lot of work has been done at the committee level. I can't even imagine, and we're asking probably a scratch on the surface, but I know from talking with both committee members as well as Steve, who's our liaison, how much work was involved. I appreciate not only the summary, Jeff's work in terms of getting it to us in a way. I'm sure all of us got blurry-eyed looking at furniture, scrolling through our laptops beyond wild as dreams, but I, I do think a lot of work has been done to keep our budget in line. I want to thank you for your effort on that. Other questions about the value engineering piece, because we have a motion and a second in front of us. We should move that question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Keep up the hard work on the schedule.
So, you have the ribbon coating, Jeff.
Yes. Fred, I have to say with your dark outfit, though, that's why I was asking about the salvage value. I got this vision of you out in the parking lot with furniture with a cigar or something and people pulling up in that dark black jacket. Okay, we have item B three, B one, a motion with respect to service provider for Tyler.
Motion to approve an amendment to application service provider agreement with Tyler Technologies for another three years commencing July one, twenty fourteen, and expiring June thirty at twenty seventeen at the proposed amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and five dollars.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Townmaster.
I would ask that our finance director, Mr. O'Neil, take you through that item.
Hi, Mike.
Good evening. Mike O'Neil, Finance Director. I think this is pretty straightforward. It's, this is our software and hosting fees that we pay for the Munis Financial System. And this is simply a three-year renewal of that. The total amount is three hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and five dollars over the three years. And you can see on the, the third page that that represents a, just slightly over two percent increase over what we paid over the last three years.
Questions for Mike?
Yeah. Jeff? Mike, this, that was, is Tyler the firm that we moved away from on the assessment software? I can't remember.
Yes.
At some point-
On the tax software.
The tax software.
Yeah, we moved off Tyler.
Okay.
So did everybody else.
Okay, because they're basically clientless, I believe, virtually clientless on that piece. But this, but we're very, we're satisfied with, with these pieces that were-
Yes. The, the financial system is, I forget, I think there's over a hundred installations in the state. It's, it's very prevalent. Tax, they tried to get into the tax business several years ago and it just didn't work for them.
Okay, all right. And I know that there was, you know, occasionally we hear some rumblings over at the Board of Ed about the use of, of the Munis system. Can you just sort of talk about where we are and where the board is in, in use of it and adoption and training and, and so forth?
Well, I think, I always say, nobody likes their financial software. And, you know, there's always something else that it can do or should be able to do. I can't speak specifically about what the board's doing. I know that they're working on implementing some of the HR and personnel functions. We're starting to look at those as well. We actually switched out, there were two modules that we took out of this renewal and we put in a, a module, it was a slight decrease in the price, called Employee Self-Service, which would just ultimately allow some of the maintenance function of employee information. Employees could go in and change their dress changes. We could ultimately use it for medical re-enrollment if people wanted it, you know, when we have our open enrollment during the year, that sort of thing. So I know the board's a little bit ahead of us on this side in terms of implementing that and making plans for that, but we're looking to do the same thing.
Is that in this contract or it's not?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That's why there was, there's a fourth page. It was just an extra page that has one module on it. That's the Employee Self-Service.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you, Mike. Your work on that.
You're welcome.
Item B three C.
Motion to accept the shed from Nextel located at one hundred Executive Square, contingent upon the structural analysis and final approval by the town attorney.
Second.
Second.
Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, Council Attorney Bory is here from, to talk about this and there's a motion on your podium this evening. This will be a conditional approval. We're still waiting for some structural information on the, on the shelter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have two items. As you know, we entered into an agreement with Harris Communications to replace the public safety radio system. In order to do that, Harris Communications determined that we needed a third transmission site. And the, one of the best places for that was going to be on the roof of Executive Square. Executive Square currently has a Nextel shelter that is no longer being used. But I think it's Sprint has taken Nextel over, but it's a Nextel shelter originally. And so we entered into a tentative agreement with Sprint to purchase that shelter. And what you have is, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but there's a bill of sale that is, their boilerplate bill of sale. It is not totally filled out. As far as the terms are concerned, we did have some comments. The name of the proper court, the proper corporate name has to be filled out as far as how Sprint's going to represent itself as to what they're selling. And obviously, the town of Weathersfield is not a limited partnership, but it is a municipal corporation. Those corrections will be made when I approve it as the form, which is one of the, one of the conditions of the motion. The term of this is that it's going to cost us a dollar. So what happens is, right now, they have a license agreement with the owner of the, or representative of the owner of Executive Square. Executive Square entered into a lease agreement many, many years ago with what is now SBA. And they allowed SBA to manage that roof and to install communications equipment on the roof. SBA then went out and began to sublet parts of that roof. One of the sublets was for this Nextel shelter. And so one of the conditions of the, well, it's not really a sub, but they call it a license agreement. One of the conditions of that agreement is, is when they no longer use that shelter, they're responsible, and they call it decommissioning, they're responsible to go in, take the shelter off the roof and remove all the equipment. Given the size of the shelter and the weight of the shelter, that would be an expensive proposition for them. So instead of doing that, we were fortunate that that was going to be a requirement because we could use that shelter. It happens to be in a location that we need for our radio system. So instead of them going through and taking the thing out of there because they don't longer need it, they're willing to give it to us for a dollar. And we have had it inspected. My understanding is, is that Rayanne Palmer, our consultant, inspected it along with members of Harris Communications and Northeastern Communications, this was our service provider, and that they were satisfied with the condition of the shed, except that it may need an external paint job. So that would be the only maintenance that we can see that the shed is going to need. The other issue that I was concerned with was that originally, when this was put in, I think it was in nineteen ninety-nine, there is a structural analysis that was done by an engineering firm that was sent to Nextel, indicating that the roof was sufficient to hold the shed, that it was structurally sound and that the weight of the shed, it could support that. That structural analysis is old. It's like fifteen years old now. And so what I asked Nextel to do was to update the structural analysis and have that structural analysis either addressed to us or have it addressed in a way where it's clear that we're a third-party beneficiary of that opinion so that we could rely on it. Because what happens is the ninety-nine opinion, not only is it old, but it's also not addressed to us and there was no intention that we would ever benefit from it. So for us to try to claim if something happens that we thought it was structurally sound because we had this report, we would have no standing. We'd have no legal right. So I had asked that they update it and they did agree to do that as part of this. And apparently, that has not been completed. I have been on them, as Jeff knows, multiple times and I am sure that it's coming, but we still don't have it. And so the two conditions of this approval are, number one, that it gets put into the proper legal format and number two, that we receive a structural analysis acceptable to us so that we're willing to take the shed. Because once that sale goes through, then we own the shed and then anything that happens, the town's responsible for because then there's a license agreement, too, that we have to enter into, which I'll talk about next. But because of the terms of the license agreement with the owner to keep the shed there, my concern was we had to be comfortable that that wasn't going to cause a problem. So those are the things we need. Now, we are somewhat concerned about time. And so we decided, after I talked to the manager, that we would come and ask for the authority to have him execute the bill of sale upon receiving the structural and it being put into the proper legal form so that we wouldn't have to come back to council for another vote because we do have a time issue as far as cutting over to the new system. We wanted to put everything in line so we wouldn't actually take more time than we needed. And if we needed to get this thing signed, once we get that, we would not have to come back. So that's why we're here with those conditions on signing this. So that was your first motion. I don't know if you're going to do another motion on the license agreement. There's also a license agreement, which I'll just go over, I'm just going to, because it ties into this. Once we take the shed, it's on somebody else's property. It's on the roof at Executive Square. So we have to have an agreement with the owner or the owner's representative in this instance, which is SBA, to maintain the shed there. And that agreement is actually much, much more complicated than this bill of sale. And if you'd like, I can go over the highlights of it now or if you want to make another motion.
Let's, let's, we have to move on this motion. We have it in front of us.
Act on this one first.
They get questions on the first one.
The next motion is going to be what we're going to, the town is going to be responsible for in the license agreement or payment to-
That's correct.
So wouldn't it be wise to listen to that first?
Well, we could do the license agreement. I mean, we had the first motion that was-
We're, basically, the first motion is saying, hey, we're going to buy this shed for, for a dollar? But we don't even know what we're going to actually pay for it once it's there, that we own it?
Well, we're going to own the shed and then we're going to be, the license agreement is basically like a lease.
Right.
They didn't use the word lease for legal reasons, so they used license agreement. But I'm happy to, to go over the, the terms of the license agreement if you'd like. That's fine with me.
I mean, I think it would be wise for us to do that first.
That's fine. I mean, I'm happy to do that. The license agreement is here also. License agreement was a product of quite a bit of back-and-forth negotiation between myself and the attorneys for SBA. And it's substantially different from the original agreement that was sent to us. They do this all over the country. I mean, these guys basically manage these communication sites for various owners. And so they offer generally the same terms, but because we're a municipality, we're a governmental entity, we're able to work out a much better agreement as far as I'm concerned. But the main thing is that it is a license. And by being a license, what they're doing is, they're telling us, we're giving you permission to be there, but we're not making any representations as to the structural integrity, as to, you know, that this is an appropriate location. It's all up to you to decide that. So that was why I insisted on getting the structural for the shed before we do anything else. Because we need to know, once we buy the shed, that the building can support it and that it won't be an issue because of the way the license agreement is written. Typically, when you have a lease, one of the things the landlord tells you is that the premises are inhabitable. Worse to that effect. By using a license agreement, they're basically telling us, you're getting it as is and we don't even know if it'll be, it'll support this. So the onus is on you to discover that. So because of that, we had asked for the structural. Because once we get that, we'll be comfortable that, yes, we will support it and we have an engineering firm that supports that, that we can rely on that opinion. And we have a, my understanding is that they're using a very large and reputable engineering firm to do that structural. But like I said, until we get it, I wouldn't recommend approving any of this. I mean, that's one of the conditions. So that's the first thing. And then after that, it's up to us to install it. And once we put our equipment up there, and these are standard terms, one of the things that we did was, after we received the license agreement, we had our technical consultants review it with regard to some of the terms, in particular with regard to the interference issue. Because what happens is, once we put our equipment up there, there's other equipment up there, too. And if our equipment causes interference with other signals, it'll be up to us to remediate that situation. So we had our consultant look at the terms of this and we're comfortable that that's not going to be the case, first of all. And second of all, that this is a standard term that are in these agreements, that once you put equipment up there, if there is interference, you need to remediate that situation so that both systems can coexist. So that's the interference part of the agreement. They're going to give us access to the equipment, to repair it, et cetera. The term of the agreement is through November thirtieth of two thousand thirty-two, so it's approximately eighteen years. And the reason for that is, is that the underlying agreement, the agreement that SBA has with the property owner, terminates in December of two thousand thirty-two. So they're not able to lease it for any longer period than that, even though that agreement has been amended at least two or three times. And I would assume that when the time comes in the future, if this is still something feasible, the owner will want to continue to have these leases because it generates income for the property. But at this point, the legal documents, they don't extend past December of two thousand thirty-two. So our lease can't go past November of two thousand thirty-two, so that's eighteen years. That is all that they're able to offer. The term can't be any longer than that, given what the underlying agreement is. The license fee, which is basically your rent, is a thousand dollars a month, which is less than anybody else is paying up there. It is a very competitive rate. I don't, I give legal advice, so what I'm saying is basically based on knowing what the other rates are and from what I have been told, that it is very competitive and we're getting that rate because we are a governmental entity. There is a three percent increase. And that is when, every time that we renew. And so that's a five-year, so there's going to be a three percent increase on the rent.
Every five years?
So it's annually?
It's annually. It's each anniversary of the commencement date and then all the middle terms. So it's a three percent increase every year. So that's about thirty bucks. If I'm doing the math right, on a thousand dollars. And we're responsible for the equipment. We're responsible to, for the electrical charges, for all the electricity that we use. We were able to negotiate the ability to have a portable generator to run the equipment whenever there's power outages. We're responsible to comply with all local laws and regulations. There's also provision regarding RF emissions. RF emissions, I think, are something that people have heard of. It is a health issue that some people believe. And if there are issues with regard to RF emissions, first of all, we're going to be able to participate in any studies. But if there is the obligation to remediate, to reduce the RF levels, if there's a study that indicates that we are creating RF levels that are for some reason a danger or a, a public health hazard. And that's, once again, is a relatively standard provision according to our technical, technical experts. My understanding is that, you know, this seems to be an issue that has been gaining momentum nationwide. But once again, to the extent that this ever becomes an issue, we do have to remediate that situation to reduce the risk of the RF exposure. Once again, our environmental people, our, our technical people don't anticipate that to be a problem. This is just one of the terms of the license agreement. We have to comply with all environmental laws. We have to have the property insured, which we have, what we did was, instead of just took, looking at the clause that requires insurance, we got them to agree that if they approved the insurance certificate, that would meet the insurance requirement. So we've already forwarded them the insurance certificate, naming them as an additional insured. So if they approve that, we've met that clause regardless of whatever else it says. Our only obligation then is to make sure it stays in force during the entire term of the license. At the end of the lease, either through expiration of time or termination, the responsibility to remove the equipment is on us at that point, when this lease terminates or expires. If the building's destroyed or there's fire, et cetera, they have sixty days to get us back up. And if they don't do that, then we're able to terminate the lease. We'll have to find another location. If it's condemned, once again, we can terminate the lease and we have to find another location. The terms of default are basically for non-payment or not meeting any of the other conditions that I have gone over, which is the interference, the RF emissions, any of those conditions, if we breach, they're able to terminate. If we hire contractors, they also have to provide the required insurance. We're able to assign the lease, which I can't imagine the circumstances where we would do that. But we can assign it as long as we've received their consent. There is a mandatory arbitration clause in here. So what we've done is, we've agreed to go to arbitration under the American Arbitration Association Commercial Arbitration Rules. This is a standard way for parties in commercial transactions to resolve their disputes as opposed to going to court. We certainly had no objection to that. We think that it's a good way to res- Uh, we certainly had no objection to that, we think that it's a good way, uh, to resolve disputes, and this, uh, the commercial rules for this kind of dispute would only require one arbitrator, which would limit our costs. Terms of the lease are confidential, except to the extent that they're required to be disclosed under the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act.
Except for the public reading of it at the council meeting. Except for the public reading of them at the council meeting.
It's the actual, it's the actual lease itself.
Shouldn't have read that section.
It's the actual document itself, uh, and I think that under, under the freedom of information, I could be telling you, uh, what the terms of the lease are, at this meeting. And then there's miscellaneous, miscellaneous provisions, um... Which is that this is the entire agreement between the parties. If any one particular provision's found to be invalid, only that provision's stricken, the entire agreement is not invalid. It's gonna be interpreted in, uh, with respect to the law of Connecticut. And then there's addresses for the notices, where the notices have to go, which would be to SBA Site Management or Town of Wethersfield Town Manager. And then the underlying agreement, which I have seen, which is the agreement between the, uh, property owner and what, the predecessor to SBA, which is now SBA has, has, uh, succeeded to their rights. Then there's technical requirements, the technical requirements, as far as the equipment, the transmission frequencies, et cetera, all of those were prepared by our technical people, so that they reviewed and signed off on this. Same as the technical standards, and our technical people, our consultants, we're all involved in doing that and signing off on those. And then the very last thing is the underlying agreement, which, as I said, I reviewed, and the only real, uh, provision there that's really relevant is the, uh, provision with regard to the expiration of the lease, which is in, uh, two thousand and thirty-two.
Morris, just, I want to go back, because we have, the initial motion that we did to B three C, which is talking about the authorization for the town manager contingent on receipt and acceptance of the structural analysis on the shed.
Right.
Which I think we actually have these in the right order, frankly, because we're saying in this motion that's on the table that we're discussing, not the material that you just talked about with the lease, that we have to accept the structural analysis, and, and it's contingent upon, you're saving time because you're, we're authorizing Jeff to do so, assuming the structural comes through.
Right.
The lease, which you're now talking about, which we haven't introduced the motion yet, which I, I think we will, uh, it, the wording on that is not set up as contingent on, in the same way. So, would the assumption be that we, we're, I don't want to get heavy, so in, in terms of the second motion, but really theoretically, we don't want to sign this lease if there's a structural question.
Right, we're not, right, we would not recommend signing the license agreement if there's any structural issue.
Okay.
We need to know that the structural issue is satisfied before we would sign the license agreement.
We're gonna get to that in a second, then, so, let me go back, we have a motion on the table in a second with respect to authorizing Jeff to enter into an agreement for the shed, contingent on the, uh, the completion of structural analysis, the acceptance and so forth, so... Yeah, I think we should, we should include both, I think we should include both in these motions, amend them to include both the lease and the acceptance of the shed.
I'd, I'd done that originally.
Okay, so that's...
The original motion had both.
So do we want to...
I did a bunch of whereas clauses too.
I wrote mine before you wrote yours. There's one on the podium this evening that probably suits, that Morris wrote that probably suits what you're looking for.
So I still have a question, I, I agree with this approach, but, so, once we're, we're approving this contingent on the satisfactory review of the structural assessment.
Correct.
So, is that acceptance, how are we defining that? That regardless of what it states in it, that we still have an option?
No, the acceptance would only be when the structural comes back and says that, uh, we find that the building can support that shed. That's what the structural has to be, that we...
So, so once it says that, we'll accept it?
Well, and then the form, I mean, the form, it has to be, there has to be a couple of things put in there, the proper corporate name for Sprint, and then the proper name for the Town of Wethersfield being a municipal corporation. And the bill of sale you have in front of you is a boilerplate bill of sale, it was not filled out by them, it's the only thing they ever provided us. But we would, so, I would approve it as the form with regard to those items.
Okay, so I, I guess, so, once we receive it then, we're saying that we're gonna approve it. Once we receive that structural assessment that says it's fine, we're gonna agreement, we can reconsider.
Well, I think what we're saying is, we're, we're giving Jeff the authorization upon acceptance of the structural, assuming it passes muster. We're giving him authorization to enter into, uh, you know, acceptance of the structure.
So if it passes muster, we have to accept it no matter what?
Well, what you're doing this evening is saying you're gonna, you're gonna approve the lease, contingent upon the building be able, be able to support the shed.
Okay, so then I'll, I'll follow up then on my questions on the lease, because those are more important right now. Um, so, what happens, I know you said this may be unlikely, but what happens in the event there is a claim by another communications vendor, whoever else is on that roof, that there is interference? Then we've got to remedy that.
Harris has to remedy that, that's their responsibility under their contract with us, Harris has to remedy that.
So Harris does? So we're indemnified, we, we don't have to worry about that?
We don't have to worry about that.
Okay, um, what happens after eighteen years if we can't come to an agreement on a license fee?
It's gonna be terminated. I mean, after eighteen years, there's no, there's, the, the, uh, there is no underlying lease, there's no underlying agreement, uh, to extend beyond that. The lease expires, and the shed would have to be removed in eighteen years.
So unless we come to some mutual agreement with the new owner?
Correct.
Where the current owner just extends the lease with SBA.
Right.
Right, it wouldn't necessarily, right.
Well, he wouldn't extend it with SBA because they're not there, right?
SBA is there.
No, what happens is, we're basically like subletting it, the owner is using SBA to manage the site, and has leased the whole site to SBA. SBA then licenses to a number of other, uh...
Users.
Entities, and the town would be one of them. So they have all the leases, all these license agreements with all these entities, and then they have like the master agreement with the owner. So the owner just deals with SBA, deals with one entity, and then SBA is the one that deals with all the other entities and has these other agreements.
So our agreement would be between the town and SBA?
Correct. And then the agreement with SBA expires in...
Two thousand and eighteen.
Right, in two thousand and thirty-two, right, that's why it can't go any further.
So, if we can't come to an agreement at that point, then, then what, then it goes to arbitration?
No, at that point, the lease is terminated, it expires, it's ended.
We would have to remove our equipment.
That's correct.
Or come to a separate deal with the property owner.
Right.
Or come, alright, so...
Right, or come, come to a separate agreement, agreement with the property owner, that's correct.
Yeah, so, do we have an alternate site?
Uh, we do not have an alternate, alternate site that I'm aware of. I don't, I'm not aware of, I mean, I think this was an optimal site, that was the reason that we, uh, had made this arrangement, we had tried to make this arrangement, from what I understand. I mean, once again, I'm here to give legal advice, I didn't negotiate these, I didn't pick the sites.
Right.
I'm explaining to you the legal effect of what these agreements mean.
I mean, so, to me, I, I don't think this is necessarily a good idea for us to approve until we can have a longer-term lease, this is one time where I wish we did have a fifty-year lease. And we have an alternative site and understand the total costs involved if it does go bad, we don't have that now.
And I couldn't answer those questions for you, unless...
Define go bad.
Unless the manager can...
Name any number of things, that we have interference by a third party that Harris can't make good on.
Well, that's Harris's issue to resolve, and we have a separate maintenance agreement.
But if they can't make good on it, in the meantime, we still have a system that may not be functioning properly, right?
And that would be the case at any location.
It, it could be, but not on one that we control or own.
Yes, I mean, we, we have other carriers on our towers that we can't interfere with either, and that's their agreement with us.
But there are towers.
I know, but we've given them those spots, unless we're gonna pay them back the rent money, we get, we can't...
So this is a calculated risk, I understand. So, I mean, the other thing, you asked, what, what other things could, could happen? I mean, if we can't negotiate an agreement after eighteen years.
And our option is to build our own tower somewhere.
So that's, I guess that's, that's my, the crux of my question, do we know what Plan B is if we have to build another tower? Like, should we know that now before we get into this?
No, because we always anticipated using Executive Square, and that's what the design was based upon.
I mean, I, I, you know, as I said, I'm, I can answer the legal questions, the merits of it are not, I didn't, you know, I, I negotiated the legal aspects of this. So, I mean, these questions I can't answer, maybe the manager can, but I can't give any answers for that.
I mean, we could certainly amend this thing to make contingent on a, an agreement between the current owner and SBA to extend it now, couldn't we do that?
Well, the design life of the, the design life of the radio system is fifteen to twenty years. That's the design life of the equipment we're installing. It's perfectly in line with the lease term between S, between a, a tower manager and an owner. That's what this is. At the end of the day, if the tower manager can't come to an agreement with an owner, which we will know about well in advance, we'll have time to negotiate straight up with the owner or with the new tower manager.
I mean, I would tell you for a point of information, that the prior agreement with SBA, between SBA's predecessor and the owner, has been extended a number of times already. So it would have already expired long ago, but they've extended it a number of times, they apparently are satisfied with the management services that they're receiving from them.
And, and, again, we're, we're talking about having a relationship with the management company that works with the current owner, Executive Square, for the use of the space, only because the management company handles that task for the owner. If eighteen years out, they don't renew the lease with this SBA company, their first move logically wouldn't be, well, let's get all the towers off the building. It would be like, well, let's talk with these guys about having a direct relationship, or look at alternatives, because they're income-producing.
I would anticipate that that's what they would do, but once again...
Yeah, but the eighteen-year life is rough, roughly right now, consistent with roughly the life of our radio.
It's consistent with the life of the system, and what our experience was with the, our prior system didn't last that long.
The other thing I think Jeff is thinking, I assume, would be quick to say, is if we went back now and tried to have a contingency site, we're talking about backing this radio project up six months to a year.
Oh, at least, if we've got to design a tower...
Oh, no, I mean, I think it would be very difficult, it'd be very problematic to go on other sites, from what I understand.
Two hundred thousand dollars minimum.
For a new tower.
Absolutely.
And it has to be, what's the minimum height that it needs to be?
I don't know, a hundred plus feet, Mike, what do you think?
Executive Square is seven stories. You'd have to be at least that tall.
And you're gonna be in proximity to that.
It's gotta be in that location, that's how they designed it, I'm sure, but...
Okay, I want to go back again, I want to stay on task here, we have a motion in front of us with respect to the shed. I think we need to answer that first, give Jeff the authorization to pursue that, barring any other questions, Jeff, which I'm gonna give you a second. But I just want to make sure we're framing this, we haven't even introduced the motion on the lease yet.
I know that, but I would just say, Mr. Mayor, that really, uh, you really need to approve both of these agreements.
Agreed, I, but I also was gonna say, both need to be contingent.
You can't approve one and not approve the other.
I, I understand.
Alright, I mean, you can...
It doesn't make any sense.
Because otherwise, we're gonna own something that we have no right to be on this roof for.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm just, I'm not trying to be difficult, but...
Yeah, I, I think the practical reality of this, and this is just gonna be an adjustment when we look at the second motion, the practical reality is that Jeff probably understands we need to do both simultaneously. We're gonna have to recraft the motion on the lease to make sure that's as well contingent upon the acceptance of the shed. We'll do that in a moment, I just want to make sure everybody understands that, but Jeff, you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions, one is, and this is really relative to the first one, do we have an estimate what, what the value that we're getting from Nextel? I know we're only paying a buck for it, but if we had to put the same equipment up, what would roughly cost us? Mike?
We watch the radio system shed, the PD and the Talhans, those were probably about twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, so, Mike said it was like twenty-five or thirty thousand, so that's what we're quote-unquote getting from Nextel for a dollar, okay. And Morris, this is a question for you, the one part I didn't hear you say, if, if SBA went bankrupt, somewhere along the way, do we have the right to continue to operate that for the full length of the lease, even if they were in bankruptcy?
If, if, if SBA were to go to bankrupt, I believe that that would terminate their underlying agreement with the property owner. So at that point, we'd have to approach the owner and attempt to negotiate with them directly. I mean, the reality is, you know, that I would expect, and I understand somewhat how this owner operates, because I did handle a tax appeal for the Town of Wethersfield against the owners of Executive Square. So, and I tried that case, so I got to know their lawyers, and I got to know the owners. So I would expect that, given the amount of income that they generate through those leases for the communications equipment, that they would want to continue that, because it does generate significant income for them. And so I would expect they want to continue that, I mean, I, I can't think of why they wouldn't, I can't think of why they wouldn't, I can't think of any reason why they wouldn't.
There's no way to negotiate something, and I don't know if, that, if for some reason SBA went bankrupt, that we would continue to be able to operate that, you know, get basically an agreement also from Executive Square?
The problem with trying to negotiate with Executive Square is that SBA has the exclusive right to, to do all these deals.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd have to get permission from them specifically to try to negotiate a side agreement. You know, they'd have to, we'd have to try to get that.
Is that uncommon?
I mean, I... I don't know that it's uncommon or not uncommon, I can't answer that. I mean, it certainly is... It's certainly a thoughtful idea, and, uh, if you instruct me to do that, I'll be happy to try to do that.
So Morris, uh, look, I want to go back to the point you were trying to make before I interrupt you, I apologize. You're saying, as you sit here, legal advice to us is, we have a lease agreement with SBA for the use of the space that has to be executed, and that will happen, obviously, subsequent to the approval of the structural analysis, which Jeff will do, but both of those obviously have to happen together, there's no point in Jeff, obviously Jeff's, the motion will be amended to reflect, if I'm understanding, Jeff would execute acceptance of the structural and, uh, acceptance of the shed only when both are happening centrally simultaneously.
Correct.
We're gonna look at those together, he's gonna sit at the table and say, okay, the structural came through, all's cool, we're gonna sit down and look at this lease, that's contingent on the first piece.
And that is only, I mean, I will tell you, and I should have finished it, is, that's only our end of the transaction. Once we sign the license agreement, they, uh, are requiring a, the, they, they still have to approve the specification and plans for our equipment. And so then Harris Communications is gonna give them a structural for the equipment that we're putting on, because they won't approve it until they get that. So that even if we sign...
They being SBA?
SBA, right, so even if we sign it, they won't until they do that, and they won't do that until we sign it, I mean, it's...
Right, I, I follow that, but here's a, the question that comes to mind, is, the structural, I assume, has some bearing relative to the weight of the equipment, the, the outline of the equipment and so forth?
Right, the first structural is for the shed, for us to buy it, the second structural is for the equipment that we're gonna put in it.
Which is, that's subject to approval by SBA?
Correct.
Which means the lease doesn't get executed until they come to agreement that we're not putting too much weight on it.
Oh, until they accept the drawings.
Which we've given them already.
They, we've given them the drawings, but we haven't given them the structural on it. Because we're not gonna do that until we buy the shed, and then Harris goes in, because they're gonna put the equipment in. That's just the way the thing is gonna be done, from what I understand, I mean, I'm, once again, I'm giving you legal advice, I'm not actually doing the mechanics of the, you know...
So Jeff, can you make, can you suggest to us an amended motion for this first one that includes both pieces?
I think the, the motion that's on the page at the bottom.
That's just for the shed?
No, that's for everything, that's for everything, Morris wrote that, it covers all the bases.
Morris wrote this last part.
He wrote the whole thing. I put out the packet before Morris.
Oh, okay, so this is replacing both motions?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we need to re, we need to, I guess, withdraw the first motion and reintroduce that. So let me take a motion to withdraw the motion.
Motion to withdraw the motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, so, take that off, and let's move to add this motion with the corrected language.
And if I, I use the word said structural analysis because I used a bunch of whereas's in the motion, as I typically draft these, but if you want to just make the motion, instead of using said structural analysis, you could use acceptable structural analysis.
Got that, Tony? Go to it.
So it's the same thing, except acceptable structural analysis, the rest of it's all the same, for the motion.
As we meant it to say.
Motion regarding the purchase of Nextel Shelter at Executive Square and license agreement with the site owner, whereas the Town of Wethersfield is in the process of installing a new public radio system, and whereas it is necessary to obtain another transmission site for said system, and whereas the Harris Communication, the system vendor, has determined the location atop Executive Square is acceptable structural location in said transmission site, and whereas the town has entered into negotiations to purchase an existing shelter atop Executive Square to house said equipment, and has negotiated a lease agreement with a representative of the building owner to allow the shelter to remain in place for the town to purchase an acceptable shelter structure, and whereas the term for the purchases, the acceptable shelters shall, are contained in a draft bill of sale presented to the town council and is drafted license agreement has also been presented to the town council, and whereas a structural analysis... And whereas a structural analysis acceptable to the town must be completed prior to the execution of said bill of sale and license agreement. Now therefore be a move that the town manager is authorized to execute on behalf of the town of Weathersfield, a bill of sale for the purchase of said shed and license agreement for the use on the premises located at a hundred Executive Square upon completion of said structural analysis, acceptance of same and approval as to the form by the town attorney.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, anything to add to the dialogue based on that correction of that motion?
I mean, I guess as long as it does have in that last whereas, you know, acceptable to the town, I guess I'm okay with it, let Jeff use judgment.
Yeah, if it fails, we're not going to take it.
Okay. Any other points or questions?
Yeah, I, I, I would support this, but it's that, that bankruptcy issue is a little bit troubling. And I would, you know, be interested, and I know, you know, obviously we've had tax appeals and so forth with the folks at Executive Square, but I would hope that, I would hope that we could arrange something with Executive Square so that in the, I mean, I have no idea of the financial state of, of SBA, but you would hope that any agreement could survive any sort of financial difficulties that they may have seven years from now that, I mean, they're, I assume they're a private company, we don't know, we don't, we don't get a peek into their financials. So that's the, frankly, that is the troubling part to me.
Yeah, the one thing where you were, as you were raising that point, the one thing I was thinking of from Executive Square is I've got Weathersfield's equipment on there five, six years from now. The management company just got booted. I've got Weathersfield in a pretty good spot to negotiate anything I want, because they don't have an agreement at this moment and they have equipment that they need to maintain up on my roof. So I, I don't know how that's ever addressed, if that ever occurs. You have a third party here who's controlling the lease, which makes sense, because they've turned the management of it over to them to handle. But if they were to disappear, is there some language in there that talks about survivability of our lease if the management company goes bye-bye? That it now becomes honored or passed on to the owner until he or she elects a different management company? Is there anything like that?
Well, I, you know, you can reach any kind of agreement that the parties are willing to agree to. So I certainly, and I, I will tell you that the lawyers for SBA have been extremely cooperative. You, there was many provisions that they took out.
Yeah.
There was indemnity clauses that they expected the town to indemnify them. They removed all those because we're a municipality. They are clauses regarding payment of taxes, that we would have to pay any tax increase that they would sustain because of our equipment being on their property and the extra income. They took that out. I mean, they were very, very accommodating in negotiating this. And I certainly would be more than happy to approach the lawyer for SBA to see if they would let us negotiate some type of a, a clause to continue the agreement with the owner directly in the event of a termination of the lease because of a bankruptcy. I don't know that they would do it, but I think that if...
Well, I guess I'd be more curious what the owner would say. You know, what's the owner going to say? I've, I've passed on the responsibility for the roof management of this, this shed to SBA. I own the building, I don't want to be dealing with that, I've got a million other things to do. So I'd be curious what they would say if we approached them, and maybe this is just a sidebar discussion.
Yeah, but I can't, I have to go to SBA, I can't go to the owner directly.
No, understood that they would, obviously, it's not a clandestine question, but I'm saying that I would be interested to hear what both SBA and the owner say. Well, let's say you guys had a problem. We, would, would the ownership of Executive Square acknowledge that the agreement that's in place would be honored to its, through complete lease term, regardless of who the management firm is? That, that'd be sort of a question I would ask as a sidebar. I don't know if you can fully answer it, because they may not want to speculate. But I think Jeff's raised a great question and raised a potential risk that the owner could say, huh, that'd be kind of interesting, six years into it, they've got their tower up there.
I would, whatever your pleasure, I'm happy to do that. I mean, I don't think...
I think it's something that you and Jeff can address, because it's a reasonable question. But I don't think it changes what we're doing here, but it's a reasonable question with a potential risk.
And I agree, and we'll, and we'll, we'll get into it with SBA, but at the end of the day, if SBA goes away, someone's got to fit, if, if they want us off the tower, they've got to tell us and they've got to physically remove the equipment for it to not work anymore, so I mean...
I mean, if I'm the owner, that makes no sense, that's not my first move. It's like, oh, okay, my management company just folded, let me get everybody off my roof. It's going to be like, okay, I got somebody else to come in and take care of this for me. So it's assignable. The word I was thinking of is can we, can we in some way assure our lease would be assignable in the event of SBA disappearing? I don't know if that could be answered, but I think it should be at least asked.
We'll ask a question.
Other questions on this? All right, so we have a motion and a second in front of us. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Just, just with that caveat.
Thank you very much, no, I appreciate it. I think that it was a good, good thought and I think that, you know, we'll try to, you know, it's creative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morris. Okay. B four A.
Motion to authorize Tremco to repair the Stillman Building roof per the scope of work for a cost not to exceed thirty-one thousand eight hundred and six dollars.
Second please.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. The Stillman roof was damaged during the most recent winter. Tremco working with Kerma, our insurance company, have come to a, a proposed fix with a cost share. Kerma will pay all but the ten thousand dollar deductible to Tremco to fix the roof. Mike's here to answer any questions.
This one's pretty straightforward. When will they start this, Mike, if we approve it?
January.
They're, they're actually prepared to, to start and get it done over the summertime. There's less cars in the parking lot, things like that.
What caused the, didn't, didn't we have like a railing system?
There's a snow guard system on top of the, the roof and the, the weight of the heavy snow, which damaged a lot of roofs, so, you know, throughout, you know, the state ripped that whole snow guard right off, so it actually pulled the brackets right up and, you know, popped holes through the slate roof, popped holes right...
The snow guards up there to, to prevent ice from falling on people down below, right?
Right, because, right, that's correct.
Good.
Is that something that, like, when we repair it, they'll be, we'll do something to avoid that?
We'll be doing something a little bit different, yes.
So the snow guard's in the back of the building?
Snow guard's on the parking lot side, right, so it would be the west side and the south side.
Okay, a couple of years back, a gutter on the front side, which I guess would be the north side of the building?
They're going to take care of that at the same time, yes.
Okay, because it's been a couple of years without a gutter up front?
Uh, no, that, that I think came down this spring as well.
No, oh, okay, I might be thinking of another one, a couple of years, another snowstorm a couple of years back. We've had a couple, yeah.
Oh, yes, what happened was they just reattached it. This, this, this time here, it's, it's the same snowstorm, I think, is, you know, it was just a tremendous amount of weight that pulled down this stuff.
Thank you. Mike, is this the only bid we got?
Yes, this, this is our, our roofing consultant, so he, you know, he worked with the folks from Kerma, basically Kerma, you know, and, and then developed the scope jointly.
Mike Crowley, did you have a question? I know you...
He, Stati took care of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second in front of us, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? B four B.
Motion to reject all bids and rebid the project to allow for concrete as a surface for the tennis courts?
Second.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council, we bid out the web tennis courts and we got some money from USTA, which wants pre-stressed concrete, tensioned concrete, which we didn't bid, but we got some bids. So we're recommending rejecting all the bids and redoing the bid requests with concrete. Kathy, is she here to answer any questions?
Yeah, so USTA's requirement was for a concrete as a, as a contingency of their, their grant award, their portion?
They highly recommended it.
Okay, so we're trying to honor that and some of the bids were submitted with that spec and others were not? Is that what I understand?
Yes.
So we're rebidding it to make sure all the bidders have the same criteria?
Exactly.
Got it, thank you. So it wasn't a cost issue, it was a procedural one based on getting the grant after the bid went out?
Little bit of both.
Okay, that's a little bit of both?
Yeah.
Kathy, what do we have up at, up at Mill Woods and the, those tennis courts? What kind of...
They're an amicite surface.
Okay, so how does that, what's the difference between that and what we're proposing, proposing here?
Blacktop versus concrete?
Oh, it's black, it's...
Blacktop, sorry, it's petunias.
It's like painted blacktop, basically?
At Mill Woods, yes.
Okay, and is the post-tensioned concrete, is it, does it, is it played differently or? I mean, just wondering why they're recommending it, do you have any idea?
I think the longer life expectancy, less maintenance, comes with a twenty-year warranty, so there...
Oh, it does?
Yeah, so there's a variety of issues.
Okay, and it looked like the, the two bids that we came, that we got in, one said post-tensioned concrete four-inch, the other was post-tensioned concrete five-inch?
Yes. Each company does it differently.
Okay.
And so that's why we couldn't even compare those two. Because they were, they had the difference in the thickness.
So when you rebid it, what are you going to bid it, at, at a certain thickness or?
We're evaluating that now.
Okay.
Because the USTA recommends four to five.
Four to five.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I had to stop and think, but yeah, so...
And, and is there...
And either one gives you, either company would have given you the twenty-year warranty, so...
Oh, really, okay.
And each company just, for whatever reason, did it differently.
Okay, and what's the, given that we're rebidding, is there any chance that this could get done before winter?
We're going to definitely try to get it done before winter, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What do we budget for Kathy for this, this project?
The CIP budget had ninety thousand dollars.
And the grant was twenty-five?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
And from the National USTA. And then we just got received word, we received an additional three thousand dollar grant from the New England USTA Regional.
So a total of eighteen?
Some up to eighteen. And we've applied to Connecticut USTA also, so...
Okay, but both of these, at least looking at the post-tensioned concrete, would be over budget off the ninety for CIP?
We'd be very close, we might have to find some additional dollars into town.
Okay.
Be available in the reserve.
Other questions? Okay, obviously we'll put it back out to bid, so a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? Thank you, Kath.
Thanks.
B four C.
Motion to accept the bid from Colosol Construction for the improvements to the Follybrook Boulevard Wells Road intersection for fifty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. We go to Wyden Follybrook to accommodate the high school renovation project. It was included in this year's budget and Mike bid it out and he's here to answer any questions.
Question? Yes, it's Mike, I'm sorry.
The traffic on the road, the people on the road can come in that way still?
Yes, yes, Follybrook will remain two-way.
Will remain two-way, but you can't come up the Eagle Road, is that correct or can you?
That's correct, the, what planning and zoning...
Eagle Road is one-way?
What planning and zoning recommended essentially is coming in J Street, dropping your children or parking, and then going westbound on Eagle Drive and out of Follybrook.
So Eagle Drive will be one-way?
Correct.
Okay.
But Eagle Drive is just a driveway, it's not a road.
Yep, no, I get it.
So, okay.
I just wanted, I just wanted to understand that that would be one-way, so those, the people that lived on that road can't come up that way either, they have to go out the other way.
That's correct.
Okay.
We did talk with Colosol, they are committed, you know, if they're, if they're awarded, they can jump on this project and get this done during the summertime, so...
When is the state going to rip up Wells?
State is scheduled for September eighth to start milling and paving Wells Road.
Now, how much of our work will be, once we do it, are they going to come along at the aprons?
They, they only go right, right to the gutter line, so our, our new work would match their work.
Other question? Mike?
I had a question about the homeowners on the west side of Follybrook.
Yes.
Would this be going into the snow shelf if they're, I'm, I'm looking at this schematic or the, the plot plan? Is there a snow shelf or?
Uh, there, there's no sidewalk on that section of road. So essentially, we'd be taking six feet of their front yard, so to speak, but it's all within the town right of way. The town has a hundred-foot wide road right of way for Follybrook. So it's all within town-owned property, but they would essentially be losing six feet of lawn.
Have they been notified?
We have sent them a letter saying that it is our intent to try and get this project done this summertime, you know, pending the bids, bids and award process.
Yeah, and I guess through you to Jeff, have we heard from any homeowners, concerns?
We had, we heard, I heard from one property owner on the east side who wasn't impacted at all by this.
And we'll make sure we visit door-to-door before we get started to follow up on the letter to make sure...
Yeah, there's, there's really three properties that this really impacts.
How long ago did that go out?
Yeah.
Within, within the last couple of weeks. It was just to put them on notice that this was, you know, they're going to see, see it obviously on, on council agenda and, you know, probably...
And we're going to adjust driveways and fix aprons and all that stuff.
Exactly, we fix, we fix the lawn.
Sprinkler systems get messed up and mailboxes.
Absolutely, everything gets reset. There's, there's no trees that have to come down or anything like that. It's pretty clean.
Other questions? Thank you. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, Mike. B four D. Tony, you tired yet?
Not yet.
Past your bedtime, isn't it?
No, not yet. Uh, motion to approve a three-year contract with General Paving for paving preparation work in the amount not to exceed one million two hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars contingent upon the subsequent years funding being approved through the budget process.
Second.
Mike, you're up.
Yes, this is, this is a contract that we let out for the last two times. We put it out for a three-year term. And what this is, is the scope of work that is basically the traffic control during all of our paving operations, the adjusting manholes, replacing catch base and tops, patching driveways, fixing curbing, things like that. Topsoiling the front yards, you know, things like that. We have, we did it on a three-year basis just because it's, you know, it's easier for us to plan out, you know, bigger, bigger process. It looks like a big number, but we've been budgeting about four hundred thousand dollars a year. But when we actually compared, you know, these current bid prices with the current contract that we hold with General, the prices went up like about five percent or so. So there's, there's not a real big spike in any one particular item. It was the quantity of work and we just, it's an arbitrary quantity that we bid to, to get the unit prices, so... And obviously, General Paving has been doing this for probably the last fifteen years or so for the town. So they, they know the drill.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Mike, it, it, it said that there was only one bid received?
Yes.
Any thoughts why?
Probably similar to what our sidewalk work is. We have a, a good contractor who keeps the prices down because they know, you know, know the system, know how we operate and know, you know, know what's expected of them, so...
Okay, so you're comfortable with the price even though we only have, there's no comparison that we have to anybody else?
Right.
Does it, I would go with Jeff, I mean, doesn't that seem odd that we don't have like another, one other person bidding on it? There's a lot of contractors out there that do this work, right?
I don't know, this is, this is a kind of a specialty item, because you, you, they essentially become town staff, if you will. You know, and supplement us, I mean, they, you know, General and, and, you know, when we're out during our paving operations, they probably have fifteen guys out there doing, you know, doing work. So it's essentially, you know, it's at our beck and call, at our schedule, and they have to, you know, they have to match in with two other contractors, you know, a paving contractor and a milling contractor and, and make it all gel within that schedule, so... It's, it's almost like we're really directing our own town staff or supplementing our own town staff to do this.
Well, and the other reality is they're local and they, the setup and the costs associated with setup is cheaper for them being close. The other guys probably thinking, if I have to come from Avon or Simsbury to compete...
That's correct.
You're adding enormous costs and they probably know that. They're like, General Paving's been at this fifteen years, they, you know, they probably don't even want to try a bid anymore. That's probably safe to say. But these numbers are good, they've held for many years.
They are, they have held, yes.
Other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the paving, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention? Thank you. Still stay up there, Mike, we got one more.
Two more.
Motion award the crack sealing work to seal coating in the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars in accordance with state contract number one-three P S X zero-zero-eight-six.
Second.
This is for hot crack seal?
This is for hot crack seal, yes, and the difference with this, with this bid, this is the first year, what we'd like to do is try the state bid. Typically, we have gone off of the CROG bid for hot crack sealing and cold crack sealing. In this case, I'd like to try the state bid, the only difference, it's, it's essentially the same material, and pretty much the same vendors bid on, bid on both projects, but this, in this case here, they pay it on a pound basis, the actual pound of crack filler that they use. Okay, versus a linear foot, okay? And we'd, I'd like to try it to be able to, you know, compare the difference, we're gonna be able to, you know, with, with this, with this bid, keep track of the weight, keep track of the same lengths of roads, and see how, you know, we're just completing the cold crack sealing now, we'd like to see how this compares and see which is more favorable to the town. Very good.
Quick question, Mike, it, it, it was obvious that there's, on the state bid list, they look a fair amount below this.
A fair amount cheaper, that's correct.
Yeah, um, do you know anything about them? I mean, have they
Yes, yes, yeah, they've, they've done quite a bit of, they're in Massachusetts and stuff, but they do work for probably forty or so different municipalities in, in Connecticut, so.
And they have a good reputation?
I've heard, I've heard nothing but good things about them, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
Motion to accept the state bid number one-three X P S X zero-three-zero-zero for paving work?
Second.
Uh, this is for our fall paving program, we still gotta run this list by the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, but these are the roads that, based upon road manager, the, the amount of calls we get to physical services, the amount of repairs we would have to do otherwise, uh, this is the list, that covers the four hundred thousand.
That's correct.
And includes the intersection of
Two-Rod.
Two-Rod and Hangdog. But it's state bid prices.
Well, question? What was, like, a couple of the roads that got the most complaints that weren't particularly on the, the Roadmaster list?
What's that?
You do the Roadmaster list, plus you pick ones where we get a lot of complaints, right?
Yeah, like Willard is just falling apart.
Willard and Hangdog actually were not on, were not recommendations for the current year, but based on, you know, the, the complaints that Sally's office got, my office got, you know, I'm sure the manager got.
Mike, the two-rod highway portion, where is that? Does that include the intersection of Highland?
That's Old Red, Old Red's to Highland, and it goes through the intersection, and then we keep going down to Hangdog.
Okay, yeah, we're doing the intersection of Highland, yeah, that's pretty best.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And now Sally Katz. Worth waiting for, wasn't Sally? I bet you never stayed up till midnight in Rochester.
No, higher rate folks, they, um.
They get things done a little slower.
Motion to purchase fleet vehicles and equipment?
Second.
Uh, just one, the reason, one of the reasons Sally's is here is we're gonna hold, we're asking for a hold on the two pickups. We may have a vehicle that's in a situation that needs to jump in priority, so we'd ask to hold those for a month, but the rest of the list is as requested. There, there is a, we're gonna have to bring back the lease documentation for the vehicles that will be on the three- or five-year lease, and that'll be at the August meeting. But other than that?
What's, what's the other vehicle that's potentially?
There was a vehicle referred to as a duly, that was on our original request during C N E F, but didn't make the cut. And so right now, with some issues that have come up within the past couple of weeks, we are reevaluating and did not want to pursue that right now.
Thanks. Okay, so we're, we're approving this, but we're, there's a, we're holding on the top two, and you have to come back and lease.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Yes, we will come back for those approvals.
Questions about this? Okay, motion to approve?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? Negative. Thank you.
Thank you.
So glad you stayed, Scott Sally. Okay, and then the, uh, meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thanks, Donna. Second?
Second.
Any changes, additions, subtractions, modifications? None? Everybody's wiped out. This is what happens when you cancel a meeting, right, Donna? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's a motion to accept the minutes.
There's minutes, okay.
Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you. Okay, public comment. Gus, Gus, you gonna get up and talk about a stop sign?
No.
Just a guess on my part. Ah, you're the best.
Motion to adjourn.
Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Second.
For the record, we could add your earlier comments.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you for your indulgence.
There is no August meeting.
No August?
The first meeting, early August, first one. I'm choking on a water. There's a letter here.
Eighteenth.
Let me take that for Jerry? See if you can worry about it.
Did you get that? No.
Yeah? I was driving home and some little girl Hold those seconds. Tony did five, everything on the table, and we were like, ah?